Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able to stand, please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and it's my turn to also give some inspiration. As we contemplate the new year and new beginnings, we like to think about taking off, you know, the vices and the bad things that we kind of fell into in the previous year and put on those good things, right? The good habits and go forward with that. I tried to look for some poems regarding New Year's Day and New Years, and a lot of them focus on the previous year and all the bad things that happened. I don't think 2022 was necessarily a bad year, but I did find a little stanza from one that I found interesting. I did spend the last five nights in New Orleans, so I wanted to find a New Orleans poet. This is by Alice Dunbar Nelson. It was written in 1895 in the poetry book Violetz. Violet happens to be the name of my daughter, so I thought, you know, let's just go with it. And I'm just going to read the first stanza because it actually gets into some interesting verbiage about "the king is dead, long live the new king," and I thought that would probably not be appropriate. So I'm just going to read the first stanza. All right? Yeah. "The poor old year died hard, for all the earth lay cold and bare beneath the wintry sky, while gray clouds scurried madly to the west and hid the chill young moon from mortal sight. Deep dying groans the aged year breathed forth, in softing winds that wailed a requiem sad, and del crescendo through the mournful air. The new year is now welcomed noisily with din and song and shout and clanging bell and all the glare and blare of fiery fun. Sing high the welcome of the new year's morn." All right. So do we have an approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, we have an agenda. Now to the report out from closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session today regarding anticipated litigation under Government Code Section 5495-6.9 subdivision B. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you, City Attorney. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of reading and resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Crebes and Parkers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving along, approval of the meeting minutes of the December 13th, 2022 regular council meeting. Were there any amendments that are to be made here from the dais or anything to you, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Parker submitted some edits and some recommendations for changes, and those have been incorporated into the minutes. They were non-substantive changes.
You read my mind. Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of the amended minutes?
I'll move to approve the amended minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Now on to Mayor and City Council reports. Any reports?
I'll go first.
Thank you.
I have no report at this time.
That's a quick report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I have a couple of things. The Clean Power Alliance did not meet since our last meeting. I did attend the holiday luncheon on December 21st. It was a delightful event. I'd like to thank everyone who put it on and all the staff that attended. It was a really nice time and some great food. And then also, since our last meeting, I did make a visit to 500 North Michelinda, which is on our agenda today. I guess we'll declare that later, but I decided to do it now. And then I just want to thank everybody who worked on the Rose Parade float. It was gorgeous. We got another award for it, so congratulations to them. And in honor of that, I bought their pin and wearing it tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker.
Nothing to report.
I will just second Councilmember Parker's and say that the staff holiday luncheon was lovely. The food was good, and it was a good turnout. I think people, staff seemed, you know, seemed like the kind of holiday lunch you'd want to have. It was relaxed and casual, and everyone seemed to be having a good time. So I appreciate those who put it together, and I think, you know, it was a nice send-off for the year.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On Saturday, December 17th, there were two ribbon cuttings. I was joined by Councilmembers Parkhurst and Low. The first was to celebrate the grand opening of Merrymades on Windsor Lane, and the other was to celebrate the one-year anniversary of My Friend's Cafe in Kirsten Court, right at the turn there. And they were both very well-attended. It was a good event. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting that as well. Very next day, December 18th, we had the Candlelight Walk. I attended that. I did see Mayor Protem Crebes there. Obviously, always a very, very special event here in town. It's fantastic to see so many of our residents get together for that evening. And also, the Rose Parade float, that should be mentioned. We won the Founder's Award, which is the most outstanding float built and decorated by volunteers from a community organization. I did see the float come through town and stop in Kirsten Court for about a half an hour. The hydraulics were working, and we could see the bear moving, and it was really a sight to see. It was a beautiful float. I did attend the Rose Parade the next day. It was nice to see our princesses and ambassadors on that float waving with their big smiles, representing the City of Sierra Madre. It was, I think, the 80th out of 88 entrants. You had to wait a while for it, but it was a great, great day to see another award for our fantastic association. I also have a few city announcements and events given to me by staff. The Sierra Madre Fire and Police Departments would like to invite residents and business owners to a public safety town hall meeting taking place Wednesday, January 18th at 5:30 p.m. at the Sierra Madre YMCA in the Sierra Madre Room. The topic is defining the future of your public safety. There will be a presentation, then breakout discussion groups, followed by light refreshments and a closing raffle. Registration is required. There are flyers on the back table. For questions, please contact the fire department. And it's rumored that I might emcee or host that event, and this is part of our strategic plan events, so this is very important that we get input from our businesses and specifically our residents on that. Also, due to the recent heavy rains, our local trails have been closed for safety purposes, but should reopen tomorrow. To give you a perspective on how much rain we've received, our rainfall totals for last year, October 21st to September 2022, so October 2021 to September of 2022, was 16.7 inches at the city yards. This year, from the same start date a year later, October 2022 to January 23, we have already had 18.42 inches at the city yards. We received more in the last three and a half months than all of last year, so that's a blessing as we refill our aquifer, hopefully. I would like to thank our Public Works Department for keeping the gutters and storm drains clear of debris, so we didn't have flooding issues with all this heavy rain. I came back from the airport yesterday driving through LA, and it was a mess. I got to Sierra Madre. We didn't have anything blocking any of our storm drains. There were, I got home close to midnight, and it was raining pretty hard. There were cans in the street, and they weren't floating down the street for once in a while, so I really would like to applaud our Public Works for that. The Senior Community Commission is seeking nominations for the older Sierra Madre American of the Year. Nominations are due by March 16th. Please call the Community Services Department at 626-355-5278 with any questions or to get a nomination form. And finally, congratulations to Sierra Madre Elementary School. It was posted today that it had been selected for the prestigious 2023 California Distinguished School Award. The award celebrates exceptional schools, districts, teachers, and classified employees for their innovation, talent, and success in supporting students. So bravo, Sierra Madre Elementary School. That concludes Mayor and Council reports.
I would say, and bravo, Sierra Madre, for supporting Sierra Madre Elementary School.
Yes, there is a lot of that. Thank you. So now it's time for a public comment for items not on the agenda. If you have not already filled out a yellow card, please fill out a yellow card for items not on the agenda and hand it to our City Clerk. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If we get to three minutes and you're not yet done, I'm going to encourage you to finish up. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city did not receive any emails for items not on the agenda. We did, however, receive three comment cards. The first speaker is Gary Hood.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Happy New Year. I would like to first welcome newly-elected Councilmember Lisa Lowell. And I must say, it's a pleasure watching the kids grow up and then to see them beyond the council. It's very special. When someone runs for council, the community looks at what their interest is in serving the community, and we vote that person in that we think comes the closest to representing us to fight and preserve our little community in the big city. When I went to school, it was important to do your homework if you were hoping to pass the class. It appears that past council have not been doing their homework because on two occasions, over 1,200 citizens' signatures were approved to put a petition on the ballot and also a referendum. Misinformation that came out of council has divided the community, causing these actions to be taken. It is felt that if the council had been doing their homework, the community could have been united, not divided. I was told by two different people higher up in our state government that our council never approached Sacramento and did not have to take actions that they did. It appears council felt the MOU they signed with the referendum in it protected them from any lawsuits except for coming from the Church and New Urban West. I hope this new council totally understands Senate Bills 9, 10, and 330, and will take action that brings the community together in preserving our little village here in the foothill. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hood.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Kristin Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Stevens. I live on Grandview Avenue. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. I understand the city has scheduled February 14th to hear our appeal. My husband and I paid the fee to appeal the December 1st Planning Commission decision under protest. We would be very grateful if you would also agendize our fee dispute to be on the same night. It would save the city time and resources, and basically, that's all I'm here to say, besides I'm happy to see our city did not float away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Leila Regan.
Hello, City Councilmembers. Mayor Garcia, it's your friendly neighborhood City Librarian. I'm here to talk about our One Book One City, which is going to be this book right here, Flying Free, My Victory Over Fear to Become the First Latina Pilot on the U.S. Aerobatic Team. It's by Cecilia Aragon, and we did get to secure this author to come and speak, so we will have an author talk right here in the City Council chambers on Saturday, February 11th at 6 o'clock p.m. We may or may not have some light refreshments, if anyone is interested. And we will have some fun programming for people of all ages all the month of February, so we're hoping everyone will tune into the library for our One Book One City events. And that is all I wanted to share with you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Librarian Regan.
There are no other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gordon, something not on the agenda?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Good timing. I am here in my guise as president of the Sierra Madre Playhouse, and I want to tell the world about our second solo festival, the Festival of Solo Shows, which is starting this Friday, where we're bringing back a fantastic performer who tells the life story of Billy Holiday and then does a Billy Holiday show. It's on for two weekends. We're trying an experiment, so just one weekend, word of mouth. We hope the people come back with all their friends the second weekend. Then our second show is called Mr. Yuniochi, as you will remember from Breakfast at Tiffany's. Part of a Japanese-American is played by Mickey Rooney, who is not actually Japanese-American. So this play is about a person who plays Mickey Rooney, who is a Japanese-American. The next show after that is the story of Elizabeth Taylor, which is told very dramatically. And the last one is a musical Life of Lady Di. So those are the four solo shows that we're having for this year's festival, and you get a special discount if you book for all four, as I'm sure all members of council will be doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Are there any more comments for items not on the agenda? I'm seeing none. We'll move to consent. We have quite a few items on consent today. I'll go item by item, see if we have any questions on any of the items. Item A. B. C. D.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's not a question but a comment, so I can either take it now or at the end at your desire.
Why don't we take it after a public comment?
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you. E. F.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just had a question about the scope of the street improvement project. The staff report mentioned that an alternative additive, the sidewalk repairs for Zone 3 from our recent maintenance inspection program. It wasn't clear to me whether that was actually included or whether that was an option to include, so I just had a clarification.
Director Semino?
Thank you, Councilmember Crebs. The contract is to include those sidewalk repairs.
So that's included in the bid price?
Yeah, it's an additive alternate for the bid package, but we did include those.
Okay, so that Hardy and Harper bid number includes that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You might want to stay.
We're on G.
Yeah, I have a question.
All right.
So the question I had about the water main lining project, and I know we did this previously in a different spot in the city, just remind me, is this a way of extending the time horizon for actually replacing it, or is this sort of in lieu of replacing it, and we wouldn't actually contemplate replacing it until, you know, some future catastrophe?
The lining process is in lieu of replacing, so the liner that we put in there should be a 75- to 100-year liner, so it's in lieu of replacing. And these, we call them cross-country water lines, are really going down either steep mountainsides or going underneath properties that we can't access anymore. They were done in the 20s and the 50s, and back then, there wasn't as many properties, and now, so they're, these are, so we don't have to replace those lines.
Got it. Thank you.
And it's my understanding there are no service connections on that run?
Yeah, when you line it, you have to have a complete line, no service connection, this style of lining.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on item G? Item H? Finally, item I.
Nice job on the appointment.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any public comment for items on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, there were no emails received for the consent calendar, nor any speaker cards were received.
Okay, thank you. All right, now to discussion. Since we didn't have a ton of questions, I won't go item by item, but I know that we do have a comment regarding the ACFUR.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So I just want to thank the finance staff for this. You know, it's an unmodified opinion on the financial statement of the city, so that's significant in getting through that. I also appreciate the mention of the continued coordination with the CERT team. I think it's an important resource we've got in the team, and I appreciate that. Want to congratulate on the fifth consecutive GFOWA award for our outstanding finance. And then I want to call attention to some interesting things at the end of this. At the end of the report, it had some statistics on the city, and this was from between 2013 and I think it was 2020. Our traffic violations are down 43% as well as most of the other police-related incidents. Our fire calls were up 30%. In 2013, we repaired 30 water mains, and in 2022, we repaired 391. I think that just goes to show the amount of effort that the whole city has made over that nearly 10-year period, and I just want to thank both the finance staff for their great work and the rest of the staff, the police and the fire and the public works for great work, and you can see it in that report if you dig into it. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to echo the praise for the finance team. Any other comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move that we make a motion to approve the consent calendar as it's posted.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving right along. We are now at, did I skip a page? Yes, public hearings. Before I open the public hearing, I'd like to ask if there are any disclosures for ex-party communications regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I think this Councilmember Parker's mentioned it before, but we were invited to visit the residence subject to this public hearing, and so I went last week and toured mostly the exterior, but was lucky enough to be able to see the AA Milne Pooh playroom, so that, thank you to the owners for allowing us to have that peek into a very historic and interesting facet of their home. But as put forth in the application, the designation is for the exterior, so that's where we spent most of our time, and just viewing the property. I will say that it was raining quite heavily, so I don't know that we lingered, but definitely got a sense for the property and the architectural and historical significance.
And I've got the exposure I made before.
Disclosure's made. Okay. All right, so it's now time to open the public hearing. We have Planner Wolf with a presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Garcia and Councilmembers. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present on 500 North Michelinda, the historic designation and Mills Act contract for the Picard Hoover Residence. The property is located at the north end of Michelinda, down a pretty deep driveway. It is a approximately 1.4-acre property, 50,000 square feet. It is zoned and designated in the general plan land use for residential low-density. And of significance to this property, as you can see pictured here from the Los Angeles Times Photographic Collection, is the Herbert Hoover family. From left to right, you see Herbert Hoover Jr., then Margaret Watson Hoover, Alan Hoover, Lou Henry Hoover, and finally, on the right, is President Hoover Hoover at the time, President at the time. And this would be on the steps of the entrance to the building that some of us were lucky to be there last week. So part of designation criteria is the first one being for historic. This one in particular, the finding is for persons being significant to the history of Sierra Madre. Although we know that Herbert Charles Hoover is the son of the 31st president, he also made contributions to Sierra Madre as chairman of the Boy Scouts. Here you can see Herbert Charles Hoover pictured on the front page of the Time, the cover of the Time Magazine, as well as on the right-hand side of the slide. Here's on the Los Angeles Times Sunday Edition from February 13, 1932. In the years 1932 to 1943, while residing at 500 North Michelinda Avenue, Hoover established himself as an engineer, radio communications innovator, and advisor to foreign governments. Community involvement, as I mentioned, included his role as chairman of the Sierra Madre Boy Scouts in 1935. And then the other criteria for historic designation, and either of these criteria for findings can be made, in this case, it would be for both, and this one being architectural, in particular that the structure on the property embodies distinctive characteristics of a certain style. In this case, it would be Spanish colonial revival, and that it also is a valuable example of the architectural achievement. So here are listed some of those character-defining features of a Spanish colonial architectural style, the asymmetric facade and floor plan, multiple side gabled and low-pitched roofs, red clay tile roof, wall surfaces extending to the roof gable peak, white painted stucco as well as brick exterior siding material, red garden paths, arch entry doorway, decorative Vincent gables, interior beam ceilings, and so on. Here you can see the picture of the entry archway door here on the left-hand side of that slide. On the right hand, you can see the continuation. Here's where there is white painted brick gliding the building. Above that, you can see kind of a wider span of that. The building is quite large, so it's a little bit difficult to fit into one picture. Here are some more pictures of that. You can see the side gables here, and on the top left, this is the original portion of the structure. On the right is part of the addition in the 1930s, which was found by the historian to be well-established with the existing style and in kind to the existing style and architectural features. On the lower left of that slide, you can see the rear-back patio with a brick paving and wood trellis structure, and on the bottom right is the lower-level garage. On the left of this slide, you can see more of that brick path patio with an ending at the fireplace here on the exterior, and the lower right is just another example of gable-ended features. So also being requested is a Mills Act contract. In summary, and very short summary, the estimated property tax savings over 10-year life of this contract would be an estimated $360,000. The cost over 10 years for the rehabilitation and restoration would be $573,183. And so over those 10 years, the cost of rehabilitation and restoration is greater than the estimated property tax savings under Mills Act assessment. Thereby, 100% of tax savings would be used to fund the rehabilitation and restoration. And I've listed some of those restoration items here. The bulk of that is going to be repair of the planter walls, paint of the exterior brick, restoration of approximately 50 windows, driveway rehabilitation, and a full re-roof. So over 10 years, the actual cost or loss in property tax revenue would amount to approximately $79,000. The alternatives before City Council is a little bit complex, so just to spell it out, there are two resolutions in sequence. The alternatives before City Council is a little bit complex, so just to spell it out, there are two resolutions in sequence. First resolution, twenty-three oh-two, would be a resolution to approve a historic designation for the Picard Hoover Residence. The second would be to approve a Mills Act contract. So those options, the first being to approve both resolutions, the second being to approve the historic designation but continue consideration for the Mills Act contract. Third being to approve the historic designation but to deny the Mills Act contract. Fourth being to deny both resolutions, and finally, continue public hearing for both items, for both resolutions. It is recommended by staff to adopt City Council Resolution twenty-three oh-two and oh-three as presented, approving both historic designation and a Mills Act contract for the property. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Planner Wolf, for the beautiful presentation. It's a beautiful building. If I could ask you, just for the, most of us up here know what Mills Act is, but for the pleasure of the public, could you explain what the Mills Act does and is and how it functions?
So a Mills Act is a savings on property tax in an effort to fund the cost of rehabilitation and restoration of a historic property. All of, the intent of that is to find a purpose for basically improving characteristics within the city. So in this case, it would be finding that this is also both a historic property worth preserving and allowing the property owner basically a form of subsidy to fund those costs.
So it incentivizes residents in the town that own buildings in the town that are, not, they don't have to be historic, but some type of, one of the criterias under Mills Act to improve or keep the property up. Yes, we forego monies for the city, but it incentivizes some preservation here in town. Is that correct?
Yeah, it does incentivize preservation. For the city, it does have to be a historic landmark designated by our city.
Thank you. Thank you for that distinction. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Planner Wolf, when were you able to first visit the property? I saw there was a sunny day. When did you first go to the property?
First went to the property back in November.
In November of this year?
No, I'm sorry, last year, or twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so soon after they, because when did they purchase it? It was October-ish?
It was in twenty-twenty-one that they purchased it, yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. And so I understood from during the tour that they did some work on it. Did you see the work that they have done already to date?
The work done thus far was not work requiring a permit or review by the city. It was my understanding that they were just kind of working on removing gravel that had been in place.
Okay, okay. How long does it typically take to go through a Mills Act application?
Typically, it takes about four months. There were admittedly delays in this one. It had been prior policy of the city to not consider or bring forward for consideration by our legislative body any Mills Act contracts until compliance reports have been completed for all other existing Mills Act contracts.
Say that again.
So to answer your question more directly, about four months.
Okay. It takes them four months, but this one took nine months.
This one took nine months. Would you like me to go over why it took so long?
I, I, I'm curious as that. And was it, was it because you were waiting for other Mills Act homes to file it? Or were there other things that were delaying the Mills Act process?
So one factor was waiting for compliance reports to come in. Another factor was basically negotiating the rehabilitation items on their rehabilitation plan. Some of them, when they first presented them, were not things we thought would be covered by Mills Act under the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Those things typically cover things like landscaping. So that's something we had to renegotiate and they had to rethink about so that they could fully realize the cost savings into their rehabilitation plan. So that did take some thinking.
Got it, got it. And how easy was this to get on the Planning Commission's calendar?
We had to plan about four weeks in advance.
Just four weeks in advance, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protemp?
Because you mentioned it, I thought it might be worth explaining. When properties are given Mills Act contracts, as you mentioned, there are others in town, they do have, it sounds like, some sort of periodic reporting requirements. Could you just maybe explain that process and how that works, and then how the city monitors, I assume monitors, compliance with, you know, the types of restoration or rehabilitation projects that are part of the contract that you negotiated similarly to this project?
So each year, everyone who has a Mills Act contract is required to report their, how they addressed and fulfilled their rehabilitation obligations. And normally, that comes in the form of receipts or a spreadsheet of some sort, or some document that goes over and explains every improvement they've done to the property. And sometimes, that's not always something that would require a permit, but what we, how we verify that is where there is work that did require a permit, we use our permit history to find where work has been done.
And then when the items in the contract, like similar to the list that you put in your presentation, are complete, does the Mills Act contract end, or is it perpetual?
It's in perpetuity. It's automatically renewing every year for a full duration of ten years. And in that ten-year time is when they have, they're typically obligated, but not always obligated. And I'll say, you know, there is an exit, you know, strategy for this contract, but it's typically very difficult. And I think I would defer any questions about the contract specifically to our city attorney.
But then it's a ten-year, it's a ten-year tax subsidy essentially.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
May I follow up?
Yes, please.
Can you say off the top of your head, the, I think it's twenty-four Mills Act contracts, are they all up to snuff as of this meeting? And if some are not, why aren't they?
So all twenty-four contracts are in compliance currently.
In compliance now. Does that mean that if you went back five years from now, in those agreements, would we find that they were in compliance in all those years?
We do review this annually. In past years, there were some that were up for question, but none have actually fallen out of compliance or have a Mills Act contract canceled.
None of the ones in town have fallen out of compliance at any time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. When the, the schedule of repair rehabilitation, let's say costs increase dramatically and that value changes, do they have to bring it forward for, do they have to apply for variance or petition of some sort to change that amount?
They do not need to come forward if it's not an exact amount.
Because it's maximized?
Right, right. It's all estimated at this point.
Any more questions? Thank you, Planner Wolf.
Thank you.
All right, since this is a public hearing, it's time to hear from the public. Do we have any comment cards for the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, there are no comment cards for the public hearing.
If the applicant's here, does the applicant want to come up and make a statement, or not necessary, but if you are? Nope, okay. All right. Comments, I guess? Any comments on this?
Have a couple.
Yes, please.
So one of the things that I heard from the owner was that the previous owner had owned the house for twenty-five years and that it was in significant disrepair at the time. That's why I was asking for what they had seen, whether they'd seen it prior to it. But what they had relayed, the immediate things they did was they had to lop the trees up about twenty feet off the ground and had to really clean out the gutters. They hadn't been cleaned out in a long time. So there was some, it just showed that this house could have fallen, or had fallen somewhat into disrepair. And so it's a reminder to us, I think, that if these, if we don't take care of these homes, that that can happen. The second comment is, and it's also a disclosure, is that I am one of those twenty-four houses in town. I have a Mills Act house, the C.J. Pegler House, also in the movie Testament, if anyone has seen that. And I can speak from personal experience, some of the costs and challenges to maintain and repair that house. I am very thankful today that I don't have water in my basement. Because my first year here, I had to pump my basement three times. And had over four hundred gallons one of the times when that happened. And so we had to do some, some work on it. And I'm not saying that to, you know, as anything other than a recognition that these houses do require some, a little extra TLC. And so I've seen it myself, and from that standpoint, I don't know if I have to recuse myself, but if I'm not, okay, thank you, city attorney, I'm in support of it because I see what happens, and I also see the history in it. And the other thing that wasn't noticed here is that Hoover Jr. was also under Secretary of State. Is that right, Planner Wolf? Is he still here? Oh. He had a role in the Hoover administration, I believe.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
Okay. So he also had, you know, the Mills Act designation, I believe it said, local, state, or national significant. There was definitely the local significant of the Boy Scouts. But also, you know, want to recognize the national significant of this, of the, of him and the Hoover administration. And then, as Councilmember Krebs said, the, you know, this incredible room, it's not Mills Act, I will give you that. But it's designed by AA Milne, and it is quite an additional asset of that property. And I think, you know, anything we can do to help preserve it. And if we, if there is something that we can do even to encourage some sort of community outreach on it, I mean, this is, this is something that's particularly special about that property. Otherwise, you might not be able to tell that it was Mills Act. But that room, that room has something in it that I think touches a lot of people's hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers. Any other comments?
I was just going to comment that I too went to the home on the rainy day. And being in Sierra Madre for so long, and already hearing the history of Herbert Hoover coming up Mitchell Linda and pulling into the, or I think it was on the south part then, pulling into the property and people coming to parade, it almost reminded me of when the Queen of England came to Sierra Madre. And the room that you're speaking of, the Winnie the Pooh room, is amazing. And there's so much history that's still preserved there, like the ambiance, the paintings, the accents of all of the property are still the same. And I was talking to the property owner, and it's not just a cost of the repair, but you can't replace windows that have dual panes into that style and that. So you can't replace it and make it economic for yourself. So you're wasting, you know, energy, which you normally would get if you replaced them and put new, a new look to it. So the Spanish revival theme of the, and ambiance needs to stay the same. And I think that it's amazing how much work they're putting into it, and that's like their main focus. So it really was kind of nice to see someone really wanting to preserve that, especially like a newcomer to Sierra Madre. It was really neat.
Thank you.
I concur. I think it's a, it's a pretty good investment on our part to see if we can preserve this for the future. Sierra Madreans, it's definitely a unique property with a very unique history that I think we should all be proud of. So I support the historic designation and the Mills Act.
Yeah, I was glad to hear. I was, I guess I wasn't fully focused on the fact that there is a sunset to the, you know, the fiscal impact. And so I did appreciate that that, you know, that's a benefit, you know, for a medium amount of time given to the homeowner to be able to restore and repair. And then hopefully, then they maintain, right? Because I guess at some point, the financial benefit falls off. But hopefully, by that point, you know, that's, that's part of the homeownership. And so I was, but I was, to me, it's a nice balance. Like it is going to cost the city some money, but it does provide the kind of incentive that I think we want to incentivize our residents who own these kinds of properties to do.
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think this is a great program to continue the preservation of these historic homes that do need some work and require work in order to, to keep around for hopefully another hundred years or so. It's one of the, one of the charms of Sierra Madre. So I am in support of both the historic designation and the Mills Act contract. With that, I'll entertain a motion. I know it's, there's a few different options here, but let's...
Mayor, did we take public comment on this item?
We did. There was none. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to adopt City Resolution twenty-three oh-two and twenty-three oh-three as presented.
Okay, and we don't always do this, but since there's a couple of things going on, it's confusing. Any questions before we have a second? No? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now on to our discussion items. First item is consideration of appointment to fill current and anticipated vacancies in the Planning Commission Board.
Mayor, Deputy City Manager Aguilar will be presenting.
Thank you. Before the City Council this evening is consideration of an appointment to fill a current vacancy on the Planning Commission. Commissioner Bob Spears completed two full terms and a partial term, which concluded on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. In doing so, there are left a vacancy. The city advertised for that vacancy and received four applications. All four applications were uploaded to the city's website and provided to the City Council, and they are also attached to this report. The City Council is being asked to consider an appointment to fill that vacancy that is currently existing and to take effect immediately. Also, the city, the city staff is asking the City Council to consider that on July first, there will be a vacancy from a termed-out commissioner, Commissioner Hutt, who is completing his second full term on June thirtieth. And so effective July first, there will be another vacancy, expected vacancy. The City Council may select someone to fill that vacancy from the existing applications that were received, or the City Council can ask city staff to continue the recruitment and make a decision at a later date. It's the City Council's decision. The benefits from making a selection now is that if you were to select someone to fill the July first vacancy, that person could then attend the meetings and be up to speed by July first. And then you wouldn't have, you would have minimal downtime. Of course, that, that would provide that applicant or that new commissioner or incoming commissioner an opportunity to just transition a lot easier. So those are the options before the City Council this evening. I'm happy to provide any information or answer any questions.
Thank you. And I can't recall how we did this last time around. Did, did we, did we poll the council first, or do we have the applicants give an opportunity to come up?
We offered them all a chance to speak.
Okay, yeah, let's do it that way. I think that's, that'd be the best way to, way to go about it. Let's have the applicants, if you want to and you're here, come up and speak. I'll go alphabetical order. Is Mr. Catalano here? No? Okay. Dr. Moran, if you'd like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to the mayorship and Mayor Protemp and the new council member. My name is Christine Moran. I ran for City Council unsuccessfully in the twenty-two, twenty-two election. As part of my campaign, I talked to hundreds of people in the community. I consulted with many trusted advisors in California and beyond, and attended many council meetings. I became convinced that the Planning Commission performs crucial work to make a difference and decided to try to get involved should I not be elected. I have studied the city's municipal code and researched zoning extensively. I'm interested in bringing an unbiased, neutral, scientific lens to thorny community issues as well as our everyday issues that affect all of us as homeowners or renters or community members. I am especially interested in how we try to balance our needs for housing, environmentalism, upcoming California regulations, and the priorities of current community members. I want to plan for the future my kids will inhabit by helping to shape my community through involvement in the Planning Commission. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Patrick Simcock.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protemp, fellow council members. My name is Patrick Simcock. I'm one of the applicants for the Planning Commission seat. Little about, about myself, I'm a lifelong Sierra Madre resident, except for about three years in my mid-twenties when I moved away. But still fortunate enough to call Sierra Madre my home, and I currently reside up in the Upper Canyon. I went to school here. I worked at many local businesses, including the Recreation Center and our local city subsidized taxi service called Herb's Taxi. if you actually were here thirty years ago and remember that. I've also served on the board of the Sierra Madre Community Foundation for seven years. I was part of the UUT Oversight Committee, and I was a delegate for the city to 2007 All America City Awards, which is the year we brought home the award. My schooling and background are in engineering. I worked in the large limit commercial property insurance industry for the last fifteen years. I currently work as a high hazard property loss prevention consultant, where I regularly need to understand and apply building, fire, and safety codes to help my customers understand possible risks and provide them with ways to help mitigate their risk. I feel that working with many different codes on a frequent basis will help bring additional expertise and insight to our commission. My profession has also taught me how to systematically work through a project, quickly identify key elements, and work through potential problems to find practice, practical solutions that are beneficial to all. I feel like that becoming a member of the Planning Commission is a great way for me to continue to give back to my community, and that will allow me to try and ensure that the unique character and charm of Sierra Madre is maintained for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simcock. Young Yu, is Young here? No? Okay, let's bring it back to council. I'd like to get some input on this. If you had an opportunity to review the applications and/or interview the applicants, please share.
I did review all the applications and have some prior work with Albert, except I don't really know who Young Yu was. I'd never met him yet. But I have to say that it, it was, we talked about it being a challenge before, having people volunteer for our city, and how we had so much volunteerism before, and then we lacked some. And I think a lot of it with this last election really did help show everybody that this is what runs Sierra Madre, and we need people that are wonderful and that really want to dive in and help our city. And so I think that looking at that, I would recommend Patrick Simcock to replace Spears, because I do value his history. And I think he's, he's been part of Sierra Madre's different programs for so long, he kind of understands a lot of how this works. And then also Christine Moran, because I think she is really ready to give back to our town and provides a lot of different perspectives that I think we all need. I think all of our groups really need to have different perspectives, so we can be well-rounded and have a diverse city.
Thank you. Councilmember Parkers?
Yes. First, I want to notice that Commissioner Spears is in the audience, and want to thank him for his service on the Planning Commission, as well as so many other things he does in the city. I have reviewed all of the applications as well. I think that I would echo Councilmember Lowe's primary recommendation for Mr. Simcock as to replace Commissioner Spears. For the second position, I'm, it's a little up in the air in my mind. I think I see the pros and cons of both Young Yu and Dr. Moran. I think having another architect on the Planning Commission, I think is, is really helpful. I know that Commissioner Dallas is, fills that role now. But I think that having more of that really helps. And the fact that Mr. Yu has been on the Design Review Board of Glendale and the Design Review Commissioner of Pasadena, I think helps on that. I also want to recognize that Dr. Moran, you know, has put a lot of time and effort into the city, is here tonight, ran for City Council, really shows a dedication, you know, I don't know if, if people saw, but the, for someone first running for office, she racked up an impressive amount of endorsements from, from some really exciting organizations. Run for Something, I think, was one of them. There were a couple of others that I thought was really, you know, showed that she wants to get out there and do things. So there's, there's a trade-off on each side. And I think that, you know, with Dr. Moran doesn't know as much about the architecture side, which Mr. Yu does. So that's, that's where my mind is on it. I could go either way at this point on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers. Councilmember Goss?
This is, I totally agree with the other two on Patrick Simcock. His experience in town, his knowledge, his activities, just make him fantastic for this position, and I hope we can get him on there. Totally agree with Councilmember Parkers' take on Mr. Yu and Christine Moran. I see them as different, but very, very attractive candidates, but for different reasons. I agree with the architect point of view, but I too saw Christine Moran up close during the campaign, heard a lot about her from a lot of voters. And I'm leaning towards her right now. I would like to see, hear what the last two have to say. I'm persuadable to go back to you perhaps, but right now, I'm leaning towards Christine Moran.
Thank you. Mayor Protemp?
This is going to be boring. I, yeah, I definitely agree with the primary nomination of Mr. Simcock. I just really thought the intersection of all of his experiences and qualifications really, I think, scream Planning Commission to me. And I, and I'm in a little bit of an uncomfortable position, because I actually suggested to Dr. Moran that this might be something, an opportunity to get involved. So I do feel somewhat compelled, similarly to my colleagues, to say that, you know, given the effort and investment that Dr. Moran has put into the city and being involved, it definitely speaks well. I, I also do wonder, though, that I suspect we are going to have vacancies on other commissions. And I, whereas I do see Mr. Yu's experience being a little bit more commensurate with this particular, I mean, I'm, Mr. Yu, I'm sure is a wonderful person and probably be a valuable addition to any commission. But obviously, his background, you know, again, sort of screams Planning Commission. And so I wonder if there's a way to somewhat have our cake and eat it too. If Dr. Moran was, was interested in service, you know, there might be other opportunities for that. So that may be part of where I come out in terms of maybe slightly favoring Mr. Yu, just for that particular expertise for this particular opening. But again, I'm not going to be, you know, I'm not going to be disappointed if, I think Dr. Moran would do an amazing job as well. And I think we would all be well-served if she were to serve.
Thank you.
If they can do a partial term. And if it was up to that, where we had an opening in another commission that, that she wanted to apply to, it does say that commissioners may serve a partial term and up to two full terms without a break between appointments.
Allah, Bob Spears. Yeah, I mean, this, you know, when you, when you become mayor, this is one of the things you, you're excited about, because you see everybody that wants to, to give back to the community. But you also know you're going to disappoint some people. But hopefully, it's not too disappointing. We have, we have an opportunity to seat two people on commissions, one immediately. And I really do like the idea regarding a transition. Did you have something, City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, before you continue your deliberations, would you like to have public comment?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I would love to have public comment. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not have any speaker cards on this topic.
Okay.
No emails? And no emails.
Okay, okay. I better check. Thank you. We do have a speaker, yes.
Yeah, hi, Alex Ariad. I didn't submit a speaking card about this one, but I would just ask if, since you have several candidates, why not just expand the commission? You have viable candidates now. We need the help, especially with all the development going on. Joe Catalano is an exceptional candidate. Unfortunately, he's not here, but it'd be also an opportunity to hear from the other two candidates who aren't here. So that would be my recommendation, that you simply expand it to what it used to be, which is, I believe, seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ariad. And that can be contemplated, new business, if, if we choose to do that. Yeah, so, yes.
Before you go on away, I have another question. And it follows from, I think, what Councilmember Krebs said, is that, do we know, what are the other openings that are going to come? Because, you know, June is, is a time period, do, and I hate to put you on this thought, Madam Clerk, but do we know what other commissions are there? Because I think that might help inform, because I think, you know, to that comment is, if there's another commission, do we want to direct one of the candidates?
That's very helpful, Councilmember Parkers, yeah.
I apologize, Councilmember Parkers. I thought I brought that file with me, and I don't have that file. Off the top of my head, the Planning Commission is not experiencing any other vacancies this year, but they will next year.
Okay.
There will be a vacancy on the Planning Commission next year, an expected vacancy.
Do we know anything about senior library, community services, natural resources? If I left one out, I apologize.
I don't know that information off the top of my head. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so it seems kind of unanimous that Mr. Simcock, with his, with his historical knowledge of the town, kind of stepping into the shoes of Bob Spears, if one can do that, that's, that's a, that's a big task. So when you retire, you're going to have to keep going. So I, I would like to appoint Patrick Simcock for the spot that Bob Spears, the immediate spot that Bob Spears is opening. We have three other wonderful candidates. I watched plenty of Planning Commission meetings. I saw Joe Catalano in action. Obviously, a wonderful architect understands much to do about architecture. I also personally know Young Yu. He, he has that perspective of being on two design review boards out of other cities, which I think could be helpful. I think the other thing in his application that is helpful is he actually went through the process of building a home from scratch through the, through the Planning Commission and through the Planning Department. I think that's a valuable perspective, having a resident that actually went through the process, sitting on a commission. Dr. Moran, I got to know you very well during, during the, during the election. And I, I so love your enthusiasm for wanting to do things in town. So I don't know that this commission, right now, we're sitting at five, whether or not we have other commissioners, or whether we expand this commission. I would encourage you to continue, continue, please, 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 because obviously, you do have a heart for service. But with that, I think I will appoint Young Yu as the second commissioner. Yes?
I can answer Councilmember Parker's question. I have the.
You have the list? Okay, thank you.
So it looks like the Community Services Commission will have two openings in 2023. We have two members who are serving their second term. That expires in 2023, so they likely won't run again. And we have one opening for the Natural Resources Commission in 2023, again, someone that's served two terms and likely won't run again.
So that's three commissioners of likely openings.
Likely openings.
Okay. Thank you. That's an appointment, so there's no, there's no vote, correct?
No.
Or is there?
No.
No vote? Okay. Yeah, okay.
So.
Do we have clear?
We have Patrick Simcock to replace Commissioner Bob Spears and Young Yu to replace John Hutt effective July 1st.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you. And before we move on, I would really like to applaud Commissioner Spears, thank him for his service. I know it continues. It will continue. You are a treasure to this town. All right, moving on to item two, the review of a four-way stop warrant analysis for the intersections of Orange Grove and Mountain Trail that we have to coordinate along with the City of Arcadia. We have Director Semino with a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. In the fall, the City Council asked staff to evaluate the feasibility of adding a four-way stop intersection at Orange Grove and Mountain Trail slash San Carlos. San Carlos is the southbound street in Arcadia Mountain Trail of Sierra Madre. Since Orange Grove is a border street between the cities of Arcadia and Sierra Madre, staff contacted Arcadia's Engineering Department for a joint study of the intersection to determine if a four-way stop meets requirements for an all-way stop intersection. City of Arcadia took the lead and solicited the services of Willdan Engineering for a traffic study and a recommendation. Stuff also included the intersection of Rancho and Orange Grove due to the similar straight pass-through intersection crossing Orange Grove. Determinations are based on guidelines presented in the 2014 California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. The guidelines or warrants consider the most recent reported collision history and traffic volumes entering the intersection to justify the installation of stop signs. Criteria number one, collisions. Five or more reported crashes in a twelve-month period that are susceptible to correction by a multi-way stop installation. There were six reported collisions in a recent twelve-month period of November 30th, 20 to, to October 30th, 2021. In the report, he went as far back as May 19 to October 21, and there was a total of ten collisions. Minimum volume and delay of vehicular traffic is criteria number two. The vehicle volume entering the intersection from major streets approaching averages at least three hundred vehicles per hour in an eight-hour of an average day. So that would be Orange Grove Avenue, East and West. The combined vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle volume entering the intersection from the minor streets, street approaching averages at least two hundred units per hour for the same eight-hour period on an average day, to minor street vehicular traffic of at least thirty seconds per vehicle during the highest hour. So the major street entering the intersection satisfies the minimum of three hundred vehicles per hour with three hundred and sixty-eight vehicles. The minor street satisfies the minimum number of two hundred vehicles per hour entering the intersection with two hundred and sixteen. The delay of the minor street approach data identifies that there is an average delay of a hundred and twenty-eight seconds, which exceeds the minimum average of thirty seconds per vehicle during the highest peak hour. As a result of study and the two criterias meeting the minimum requirements, tonight I bring you a recommendation from Willdan, our engine, traffic engineer, to place a four-way intersection, four-way stop intersection on Orange Grove and Mountain, Mountain Trail slash San Carlos. As I mentioned, Rancho and Orange Grove is also evaluated for a four-way stop intersection and not warranted, and therefore not recommended for an intersection, four-way intersection at Rancho and Orange Grove. At Rancho and Orange Grove, there was one reported accident, and the minor street vehicles per hour in the peak hour do not meet the two hundred vehicles per hour. There was seventy-four. Staff recommends direction from the City Council to proceed with the installation of a four-way stop intersection at Orange Grove and Mountain Trail, San Carlos Road. I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Mayor?
Councilmember Goss?
Director Semino, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Question for you. Did, did you or did the traffic engineer consider the idea of the four-way stop on Mountain Trail causing bleed-off to Rancho, and thus creating a higher risk factor on Rancho and Orange Grove? If so, what can we done, been done about that at this time?
The study did not go to that extent. What I would assume we would do is if that is the case, that we see that in the history, we will do another study of Rancho Road.
So right now, we're kind of just hoping it's gonna.
What we discovered is Rancho Road isn't really a pass-through all the way through town like Mountain Trail is. Mountain Trail takes traffic all the way to the top of Sierra Madre.
Thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Parkers? I heard, I heard the, hmm.
No.
Nope? Okay. Mayor Protemp, yes?
Just, I know we mentioned at the, at the top that this is a joint situation with Arcadia, given the location. And so I just wanted to confirm, or have you confirm for the public, that Arcadia is also supportive of this, obviously, and that that's part of the process.
Yeah, Arcadia is, they're a little different. They don't have to go to their council to approve a four-way stop. They did need to have an engineering study that recommends that. So at this time, they are in favor of it. They would, they would like to do it. We will now start, if this is approved, we will start discussions on how we will get that installed between the two of us. As we approve tonight, the street project, I can see about getting our existing contractors, you know, and making an amendment to that, to that contract to include this. And then we would. And then we would share the cost.
Yeah, that was my next question. So the cost would be shared equally between the cities? And I would say that Rancho is a pass-through mostly for Little League.
That's true, yes. Any more questions? No. Thank you, Director Semino. All right, I'd like to open up to public comment. Any speaker cards, Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, there are no speaker cards for the sign.
Anybody in the public want to come up and speak? No? Yes? Yes, please.
I live on Mountain Trail up in the Upper Canyon. And when I first moved to Sierra Madre, I'm delighted that we have so many four-way stops and intersections, and it's almost an assumption. So I remember when I first moved here, I came off the highway. I went on Orange Grove, you know, just assumed it was a four-way stop in my zen from the highway, and I almost got hit. I almost was one of those statistics. So it is something that I think, once you live here, you know, now every time, I'm like, remember, this one isn't a four-way stop. But to me, I would feel a lot safer should that be a four-way stop, just to error-correct for... And the traffic from Orange Grove is going super fast, so you don't want to have an accident there. And I think it would be minimum impact for the folks coming on Orange Grove. It's a quick stop, and for me, as a resident, would make me feel safer. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. Yes, Ms. Sheridan.
Good evening, councilmembers. Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. And yes, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I would say anybody who does live east of Baldwood takes Mountain Trail. And I'm sure most of you know that. And actually, I almost hit somebody because I turned, and this person had stopped right on Orange Grove. So that happened to me today. And I would, I applaud the fact that we might get a stop sign, although I'll tell you, my husband will be very upset if you approve it. But, yeah, because he's the opposite in most things, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I actually have a follow-up question based on the public comment. Director Semino, will we have some sort of... I mean, I've seen this before when we put in new four-way stops. I assume we'll have some sort of extra signage for some period of time, because I could definitely see people who are used to coming down Orange Grove and not wanting to stop or being used to stop until Baldwin blowing through that, and that could be even worse.
Yeah, that's one of the tough spots about installing a new four-way stop is the getting the attention of the people that are in routine of driving those streets. And Orange Grove is a 35 mile an hour street. So we were, Arcadia engineers and I have discussed that we're gonna set up some sign boards warning that it's coming. When we do do the stop signs, they'll be oversized stop signs. We don't necessarily want to make a practice of flashing red lights in residential areas, but that may be something that we might have to do. We really have to take some precaution, because people aren't used to that stop sign. And you have to get them used to it before, so they'll stop. So, yeah, we've discussed the precautions, and we're gonna do what we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. I recall when the stop sign went in on Highland and Mountain Trail, that was getting blown out all the time. And Highland and the Boulevard, when that one went in, those were dangerous for a little while. No more public comment? Do we have any... One more. Okay, please.
Phil Yao, Syracuse Drive. I don't know. Do we have an ongoing program evaluating, you know, a four-way cross other than just by balancing the traffic? There are some intersections within town that are actually quite difficult to negotiate, that are pretty dangerous. A subsequent topic later would be in that area, Sunnyside and Fairview. That one is, for some reason, I've been in the place for about 30-plus, you know, plus to 40 years. And it's always, you know, a concern to me traversing across Sunnyside on Fairview. So I would like to have, you know, to understand if they are actual, if there's a program to, that on an ongoing basis evaluate intersections that don't meet those traffic requirements. Three, 400 cars, we don't have it, not yet. Perhaps with Meadows going and so on, that might be the case. But the, even as it is right now, it's been a concern for me. Well, primarily, two family members have gotten into accidents over there. Anyway, just to throw that idea out there.
Thank you. And I know it's public comment, but maybe I could make a comment to that. It's been my experience that these things happen because we have wonderful residents that bring these things up. I remember Highland and Mountain Trail was a resident. This particular stop sign, a resident came to me, and I brought it, I agendized it. Do we, we don't have a traffic study-type program ongoing to monitor this, monitor this through any of those four criteria?
Mayor, I believe we do have a traffic and circulation plan. Something like that, to do a comprehensive study of the city would probably be, in this budget year, would be cost-prohibited, but we could definitely look into it and bring back that, what that cost would be like and perhaps budget for that in the following year.
Thank you. And I don't know that, with the four criteria discussed, just so the public understands, we have to meet at least one of the four criteria, is my understanding?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Just on that note, it seems to me that since one of the criteria is traffic collisions, I wonder if there's a way, on a lower, low-cost basis, to track that through PD? You know, if they're sort of tracking where collisions occur, we could at least then get a sense of intersections in which, you know, multiple incidents occur without having to, you know, go through a full formal study.
If the council likes, I could, we could do a study to see where we have accidents in the city, to see if they weren't further study.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I believe when we were talking before about traffic and flow in our city, we did not have a different traffic and circulation plan, but it was part of the general plan. Is that correct? It's not a separate plan? Okay. And I think that when we did set the Orange Grove, I'm sorry, the Mountain Trail and Highland, that was not due to accidents, and that was part of the thing, why would we wait till an accident actually happens or a child gets hurt?
Yes.
So I agree that we should look at that, especially with the new schools coming into Sierra Madre and the flow of different traffic, like on Sunnyside, from Alverno Expansion and on Grandview.
Yes, thank you.
And speaking of Grandview, I sit there at Grandview and Canyon, and, you know, that's one, that you're coming from Santa Anita, and your next stop is Mountain Trail. And I've heard my fair share of horns. I think I hear one or two every morning. Thankfully, in the time I've lived there, there hasn't been an accident. But I do echo what other councilmembers have said, to understand that and understand if there have been or if there are any other statistics from the police department that can help us make sure our residents are safe.
Thank you. Yes, please.
So we're on comments side, right?
Yes, we're on comments, yes.
Totally support the four-way stop here, and I would like to kind of elaborate on this particular intersection and others. I, in campaign for reelection this fall, I walked most of the southern part of the city. Certainly walked all up and down Orange Grove, South Mountain Trail, all the way up from Orange Grove all the way up to, literally, the top of the city. And across the southern part of the city and the northern part of the city where I walked, that was the single biggest concern people shared with me, bigger than the development, bigger than everything else, dwarfing everything else. Erratic driving, speedy driving, near collisions at intersections, people running through stop signs. And I've indicated this, I talked to our city staff about this, and I'm hoping that sometime after the turn of the year, when we have a new police chief seated, that we can prioritize a systematic, city-wide evaluation of our traffic patterns, because a lot of people are very scared, and particularly Southbound Trail. Every house I visited, that's, they talked my ear off on it, and I reassured them that this was in the works, that we would be doing something. So this is very gratifying. Another intersection I heard about, and I think Councilmember Lowe, well, this is near and dear to her, is over on Sunnyside in Mariposa. People are apoplectic about that intersection. As I was standing, talking to the lady at the intersection, I watched somebody run a stop sign. So honestly, so as far as I'm concerned, we're, this is kind of the tip of the iceberg, but this is probably the most lethal, at least potentially lethal, problem we have in the city at this time. So I'm very happy that we're making this move tonight, if we vote for it. And Mr. Yao's point, when I was up on Fairview and North Sunnyside, I heard from people up there about that intersection. I lived up there for 14 years. I, too, had problems up at that intersection. So it's my opinion, well, I'd be looking at that one as well. I have to tell you that when the first council I was on, we did have requests from people on North Sunnyside, north of Fairview, to do an engineering report, a traffic study, I think it was, and because they wanted bumps put in. For the same reason, they were concerned about the intersection, traffic coming up and going down. And at the time, the traffic engineer said bumps were not warranted, which was kind of upsetting to several of us on the council, because we were looking for a justification. So we passed on it. But you should know that that Mountain View Trail and Highland intersection, or stop sign that we put in during that same council, the traffic engineer told us that did not merit a stop sign. Yet we heard enough public testimony from parents and literally middle-school children who were walking across Highland at the time to the middle school that we felt that we should be rather safe than sorry. So we're not, we don't have to follow traffic engineer reports. I tend to, on public safety issues, tend to lean more on the safety side rather than the potential liability side that they're always concerned about. So anyway, I support this measure.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Yeah, I mean, we, there's a balance here, right? We don't want red stop signs on every intersection and hums and bums throughout the town. That's not what we're looking for, but we want to keep our residents safe, pedestrians, bikers, drivers, all those things. So this is one of those intersections where somebody could make, potentially, a couple times a year get wiped out. And that's what we're trying to avoid here. So I'm full support of the four-way stop sign at San Carlos, Mountain Trail, and Orange Grove. And I'm grateful that we have a good relationship with our neighbors south of us in Arcadia that are willing to work with us and cost-share on this. So I'm in full support of this as well. Are we ready for a motion? Any more comment?
I'll just quickly say, you know, I echo what everyone else says. I go that route, because I am west of Mountain Trail, and it is. I've got a 15-and-a-half-year-old who's starting to drive, and that intersection scares me. If I can avoid it, we will be avoiding it, at least for the short time period. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt the, I don't know, what are we? What am I moving?
Well, yeah, actually, I don't think we actually, we don't need approval by the council for this. But we brought it as a discussion item, so the public could be involved. Is there just direction? Or is there... Approval.
Direction, I think.
So approval for a stop sign, it would be, yeah.
Okay, so I move to approve a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Orange Grove Avenue and Mountain Trail slash San Carlos Road.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's unanimously. Thank you.
We could just relay our thanks to the City of Arcadia for working with us. They've been a really good partner on so many of these things. And I'd like to show that we continue to be appreciative of the partnership.
Point taken. Thank you. All right, moving on. Discussion item number three. Consideration of SB 300 preliminary application regarding residential subdivision located at 700 North Sunnyside. Three, yeah. That's, there's a typo. That's a 330. SB 330. And we have a presentation?
Mayor, we'll have a presentation from Director of Planning and Community Preservation Gonzalez, and also from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city, I'd like to provide some procedural background before I get into the actual application. So the city council adopted Resolution Number 2258 on September 20th, 2022. If you remember, that was for the Meadows Project, and that approved the general plan, a general plan amendment, a lot line adjustment, an environmental impact report, and mitigation and monitoring reporting program. At a subsequent meeting on September 27th, 2022, the city council adopted ordinance number 1461. The ordinance for that same project approved a zoning amendment, a specific plan, and a development agreement. Now, on October 3rd, 2022, the referendum proponents requested a summary from the city attorney, which was provided to them, and they collected signatures that they submitted as part of a petition on November 10th, 2022. Importantly, the petition that was submitted seeks to referend the ordinance, but not the resolution. The reasons for that are unclear at this time, but what the practical effect of it is that the resolution took effect, and the ordinance's status is frozen until the petition is resolved, until the referendum is resolved. And so today, the city clerk will certify the petition for signatures. That's the next agenda item. Now about this practical change. As I stated earlier, the resolution sought to amend the general plan. The ordinance sought to amend the zoning map. So because the resolution took effect, we now have a residential low-density designation for the Meadows Project site. But the ordinance hasn't taken effect. And so the ordinance is still, sorry, so the zoning is still institutional. So there's an inconsistency now between the general plan and the zoning. Now, in 2017, the legislator amended, the state legislator amended the planning laws through the Housing Accountability Act. And the Housing Accountability Act states that where there is a conflict between the general plan and the zoning designation, a housing development project may be submitted without requiring a rezoning of that property, meaning the general plan will control. So whatever the general plan designation is, that will control, and the site won't need to be rezoned to match the general plan designation. If you remember, the Meadows Project, the discussion of the procedure for the Meadows Project was divided into two steps. There was a Phase 1, and there was a Phase 2. All of Phase 1 dealt with all the legislative approvals that were adopted via resolution and via ordinance. Phase 2 is this next step of the Meadows Project, if it were to proceed. The SB 330 project that we're going to discuss in the next slide skips entirely Phase 1 and goes directly to Phase 2, which is design review permit approval and tentative track map approval. And that's all per state law. And I'll turn it over now to Director Gonzalez to talk about the specifics of the application.
On December 12th, 2022, New Urban West submitted a preliminary application under Senate Bill 330. And under such Senate Bill, the city is required to process the application, even simultaneously with the Meadows Project, and that's pursuant to the Streamlining Act and Housing Accountability Act. The Sierra Madre Municipal Code nor state law prevents an application from being submitted, by, multiple applications being submitted by the same, for the same parcel of land. The developer's SB 330 application also looks in the city's existing development standards at time of application submittal. So this site plan that you see on screen includes a total of 50 single-family units, three of which are very low-income, for-sale units that are identified at the southeast corner of the property. As a condition of approval, if we proceed with this application, those units, we are asking for the developer to disperse those throughout the entirety of the project site. The application also utilizes the same architectural design the Meadows specific plan entertained, which includes contemporary Spanish, modern craftsmen, modern and contemporary farmhouse. The project proposes one-story units ranging in size between 27 to 2,800 square feet, two-story units between 2,000 to 3,200 square feet on 8,000 to 10,000 square foot lots. Affordable units range in size between 1,942 to 2,030 square feet on... on thirty-two hundred square foot lots. The water retention basin that you see at the southern end of that proposed development is, will capture water runoff and infiltration. Next slide. Back one. I think James is going to be controlling it. So the Housing Accountability Act limits the city's discretionary review of the SBC three thirty project to five public hearings. The city also cannot deny the project or reduce its space density from the forty-two-unit Meadows project. Discretionary review is limited to objective findings of specific adverse impact that cannot be mitigated. And these limitations did not exist for the Meadows specific plan and development agreement. Density bonus law allows a developer to circumvent many of the city's development standards. An application for a density bonus allows up to twenty percent more units and utilization of one incentive such as gross floor area, an unlimited number of waivers, reductions in development standards, and reduced parking ratios based on bedroom count. New Urban West's proposal is to use the most restrictive zoning designation consistent with residential low-density development, the R one fifteen, which limits development to one single-family residential dwelling unit on a fifteen thousand square foot lot. The base density calculation for the seventeen-point-three acre parcel permits up to fifty residential units built to the R one fifteen zoning standards. New Urban West is not seeking a density bonus. However, under this scenario, a density bonus, the developer could construct sixty-one units. New Urban West is applying for one incentive to increase gross floor area and is seeking waivers to reduce minimum lot size, lot coverage, front setback, and angle plane requirements specific to the R one fifteen zoning standards. Next slide.
If I could make just one point here is if you see it's, the base density is fifty residential units and it says a twenty percent density increase, which would be twenty additional units. The difference here is for our, under our zoning code, we round down. So if there's a fraction, we round down and the number is fifty. But when you use a density bonus law, you're required to round up. So when we round up, we get sixty-one. And that's how we got the sixty-one number out of a twenty percent density bonus for fifty based residential density. And one other point about this, because I was reviewing some of the public comment that we, the city received, so I'll just preemptively note. The density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act state that if the density bonus causes a variation from the underlying development standards, that variation cannot be considered an inconsistency for purposes of reviewing the project.
So the SB three thirty application will undergo expedited review pursuant to the Permit Streamlining Act, which, which the Meadows did not. And review of the SB three thirty application, including legislative decision, is limited to five public hearings, inclusive of both the planning commission and city council review. The Meadows project underwent thirteen hearings for approval. That concludes our presentation, or my presentation. The attorney will continue.
So we thought it'd be helpful to provide a side-by-side comparison of both projects. And when you do, you really see that the SB three thirty project is essentially a more dense version of the Meadows project without any of the benefits to the community. So just to go through those rows one by one, density under the Meadows project is forty-two units. For this new project, it's, it's proposed to be fifty units. The planning commission and city council together had thirteen separate public hearings. That's not including the meetings that took place. That weren't formal public hearings. The new project will be limited to five. The city had full discretionary review for the specific plan and the development agreement. And that discretionary review will be severely curtailed under the Housing Accountability Act for the SB three thirty project. The basis for the deviation from the development standards under the Meadows project was controlled by the city. It was a specific plan and development agreement. The basis for deviation from the underlying development standards under the SB three thirty project is going to be controlled by the developer using the density bonus law. The environmental review for the Meadows project was a full environmental impact report that took many months. Because of, because this project is on the same site and because the resolution, because the proponents of the referendum didn't referend the resolution, we have a certified EIR right now for this site. And the developer is essentially going to piggyback off of this certified EIR and they're likely going, they're not, they're likely won't have to do a full environmental impact report. Now, what level of environmental review they do is still unclear, but it likely won't be a full environmental impact report. Now, jumping to the community benefits. Oh, sorry, one last point. The Meadows project could be referended because that was a legislative decision. At the SB three, for the SB three thirty project, there are no legislative decisions. That cannot be referended. Now, jumping to the community impact, or the community benefit rows there. There won't be a public park for the SB three thirty project, but there, but there will be for the Meadows project. No conservation easements for the SB three thirty project, no net zero water payments to the city. The two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that the city manager negotiated for the public safety building, we won't receive that either. And a defined development schedule that existed via contract will not exist under the SB three thirty application. Instead, for the SB three thirty application, we're going to be governed by the Permit Streamlining Shot Clock, which has very limited periods, has, it gives a lot of leniency for the, for the applicant to develop their application. And it gives us thirty days to review their application for completeness before it goes to the planning commission for review. Now, here's a, a time, a side-by-side timeline. So, so both the council members of the public can understand how fast this process will go once it's, once it's been initiated. The SB three thirty application was, here was received on December twenty-first of last year. With, and that's including with the, with the check. The check was received on the twenty-first. The applicant now, per state law, has a hundred eighty days to submit a complete application. Likely that they won't take the hundred eighty days. They, they'll likely submit that application sooner. Once that application is complete, or once it's been submitted, city staff will have thirty days to determine whether that application is complete. Assuming it is, then we're going to have the sequoia analysis, whatever that level of analysis may be. And then we're going to have five public hearings and then the process is done. For the Meadows project, here's where we're at now. The city council adopted the ordinance. The referendum proponents submitted their petition, which froze the ordinance. The city council decision regarding the referendum petition will happen today. And then there's going to be a, potentially, if the city council chooses this route, an election on the referendum. And then only after the election can the Meadows project be processed. So all of these steps that are contemplated here for the SB three thirty application likely will be completed between the city council's action today and a potential election on the referendum if that election is scheduled for sometime in twenty twenty-four. Given the Permit Streamlining Act deadlines and the limited sequel analysis. So what are the city council's options? The city, the city clerk is going to certify the referendum petition. And the city council is going to have three options. The first option is to repeal the city ordinance number fourteen sixty-one. If the city council does that, then it's going to void the Meadows project and the SB three thirty project will proceed. If the city council chooses to call an election for a special election in twenty twenty-three to decide the referendum and the electorate votes yes on the referendum, then the Meadows project will be voided and the SB three thirty project will proceed. If the electorate votes no on the referendum, the SB three thirty project is voided and the Meadows project will proceed. If the city council schedules the referendum for election sometime in twenty twenty-four, the developer has stated that they're going to abandon the Meadows project and proceed with SB three thirty. So if it's scheduled for twenty twenty-four, the city council will have an election, but the election will be moot because there's going to be no Meadows project to, to decide at that point. Because the, the developer is moving forward with the SB three thirty application if the council chooses to do that. The underlying point here is this. A project is likely moving forward and it's just a matter of which one. Under option one, the city council decides. Under option two, the referendum proponents and the electorate get to decide. And under option three, the developer decides. I, I'd like to note just one additional thing here. The, the reason we're in this position is because the proponents of the referendum chose to referend the ordinance and not the resolution. This is the only way that this opportunity was created for the applicant to submit this SB three thirty application. The city council's hands are pretty much tied with respect to their actions now. They really have only three actions and then they have to step back and see what the process, how the process plays out. I will note, however, that the referendum proponents do have the ability to withdraw their application or withdraw their referendum petition eighty-eight days before any scheduled election. If the referendum proponents withdraw their referendum petition, then the Meadows project takes effect immediately and the Meadows project is processed. That concludes my report.
Thank you, City Attorney Gary Gosian and Planner Gonzalez. All right, let's bring this to council for questions. Questions for staff.
Do we have an estimation or information from the county on the cost of elections?
Councilmember Lowe, the city clerk's office contacted the county clerk to get an estimate for that election to hold a special election in April, on April eleventh. The estimate is three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. To hold an election in twenty twenty-three after April eleventh, it'll be likely closer to four-hundred thousand. And to hold an election in November, during the regular election, on the regular election day in November twenty twenty-four, it'll be likely less than three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand because that is a federal, there will be, it is a presidential election, so the cost will likely be less.
But there would, there would be withdrawn most likely then. The plan would then be SB three thirty if it was in two twenty-four. They would withdraw their Meadows plan.
The, the applicant has stated that they would withdraw their application if it was, if the election was scheduled for some date beyond June twenty twenty-three is what was stated.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Just following up on that point. That's the stated intention of the applicant, but there's nothing preventing the applicant from withdrawing the Meadows application at any point, like tomorrow.
There's nothing preventing the applicant from withdrawing their application tomorrow. There is a dispute. There's a legal dispute between myself and the applicant's attorney regarding whether or not they're bound by the development agreement. What, what I don't, what we agree on completely is this. If the SB three thirty application becomes fully entitled before a vote is taken on the referendum, then the Meadows project is dead. What we disagree on at this point is what happens if the SB three thirty project hasn't been fully entitled, which I expect will happen early twenty twenty-four if it proceeds. So what happens if the, if the, if the SB three thirty application isn't fully entitled and the, the city electorate gets to vote on whether or not to uphold the referendum or, or reject it? That, on that point, there's some, there's some disagreement and definitely litigation risk.
So that would be a contractual, we would take the position, or your position is that it's a contractual obligation that they proceed with the Meadows project per the development agreement because the development agreement is currently effective.
Will only be, will take effect once the referendum is defeated or the proponents of the referendum withdraw their referendum.
Okay. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a state law. This would just be a contractual obligation and that would be the dispute.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Parker.
City attorney, if we could pull up, in, in Analyst Carlson, if you could pull up slide eight. You have the timeline there. And what I'm curious at is what happens with the development in, in the two different scenarios after that? So if I remember correctly, after that we're, we're now, if, if if we take the referendum off, for just, just for the, we look at the Meadows project, we have to wait for a tentative track map. We have to, there's certain milestones that have to be met going forward before like the first, you know, before they can break ground in the first house and all of that. Can you tell us a little bit about the difference between the Meadows application, what, what we have right now? Let's ignore the referendum for a second. And what would happen under a three thirty? Like, how does that differ? Because we've got certain things in the development agreement that, certain milestones, you know, the park has to be turnkey by the development of the twentieth house or something like that. I, I don't have it right off the top of my head.
Right. There, so there are a few, few issues here. First, like I said, the SB three thirty application is going to be governed by state law, the Permit Streamlining Act. Those are the deadlines that are going to bind the city. So the, the application itself will move very quickly because we're, we're bound by very strict deadlines. Now, if the, because we're here, let's assume for a moment that the, the referendum isn't on the table and we're at the phase two of the Meadows project. Phase two of the Meadows project and the SB three thirty application will proceed at about the same rate. The Meadows, the, the Meadows project might take slightly a little bit longer to process because there's just a lot more for the applicant to do under the development agreement. So the Meadows project might take a little bit longer, but all things being equal, they would proceed about the same pace. So assuming all, we get all the documents that we need, about a year and a half to process, I would think, maybe two max.
Just kind of on that, the whole timeline issue that Councilmember Parker's brought up.
Sorry, one other point. A year and a half to process and that includes, that's going to include certain building permit approvals as well because state, again, state legislator just passed new legislation that takes effect January first, twenty twenty-three that creates basically permits, the permit streamlining deadlines for building permit approvals. So the building permit approval process is going to move a lot faster as well.
More houses would be built faster in the three thirty approach?
Yeah, in the, in the application, in the entitlement phase and post-entitlement. They're both going to move a lot faster.
Oh, either one of them?
Both of them are going to move faster.
Okay, so, so the law, the law is neutral compared to the, the Meadows and three thirty from, from, from that development perspective?
Yes.
Okay. You had a follow-up.
Yeah, and, and you're continuing to bring up follow-ups, which is great. No, no, it's great because we need to, we need to ask questions and discuss this. So the SB three thirty project, well, let's go to the Meadows project. As I recall, our planning commission, Commissioner Hutt and the whole commission fought hard to get performance clauses in there to make sure this project got built quickly. Going back to an SB three thirty type of project, I know everything's streamlined and you said these houses could be built quicker, but is there, are there any types of performance clauses that are in there to make sure that, you know, this isn't taking two decades to be built or, or longer?
In the SB three thirty application? No, because all those clauses were inserted into the development agreement and they're not in the SB three thirty application and we can't require the applicant to enter into a development agreement for this SB three thirty application.
So the, the residents around there could have decades of construction, potentially?
Potentially.
Actually, as a follow-up to that, if you don't mind, I actually, having been at many of those planning commission meetings, there was sort of a dual concern that, that the commissioners, including this Commissioner Hutt, raised around that. Not just the speed at which things were going to be built, but abandoning the project. You know, that was a lot of the concern, a lot of those commissioners having served on the commission during the one Carter, insert bad adjective, debacle. insert bad adjective debacle. And so that would, that would be similarly unprotected, that type of scenario would be similarly unprotected under the SB 330 because again, we can't sort of put conditions on approvals that would create situations that guarantee that the project is completed and not half-done and then abandoned, much like Juan Carter.
So one of the provisions we placed in the development agreement contemplating this abandonment scenario is we told the developer, if you abandon this project, we're going to change the general plan designation. So we're going to change it back to institutional, so you can't develop housing. But they submitted an SB 330 application now under a general plan designation that's been amended. And our argument for trying, so they basically threw the SB 330 application, they've frozen the general plan designation in place. And we don't have a breach of contract type argument to override that. And that would be one of our arguments to try to enforce the development agreement. There are others. But our arguments become much more difficult to make if this SB 330 application proceeds.
More questions?
I do. So the, this new proposal, the 330 proposal, how is it with respect to, how does it consider the city general plan and zoning ordinance around minimum lot size, gross floor area, you know, front side setbacks, angle encroachment planes? How does it consider those things? What's part of, and I guess this would be to
Director Gonzalez?
Under the SB 330 process, once the developer is asking for or applying the density bonus, then they are also asking for concessions and those concessions include reduced lot sizes, reduced front yard setbacks, intrusion into the angle plane in some cases. So it's very similar to the specific plan scenario through the Meadows project, except in this case, we are processing concessions and it would have very similar outcome between the two projects.
Very similar outcome between the two projects. Say more about that because that doesn't make sense to me because in one, we've got 50 homes, the other we've got 42 homes.
In terms of development standards, in terms of development standards specific to either the specific plan or the R 115, in each case, they were deviating or it will be, would deviate from the underlying zone.
So right now, they're looking at R 11500, which means 15,000 square foot lots. They could have a deviation where they could say they wanted to do 10,000 square foot lots or 7,000 square foot lots. If they wanted to do, right now in the Meadows, I think it's 40% of the units are 3,800 square feet or no more than 48, no more than 40% of 3,800 square feet, I think something like that. Anyway, they could go and they could ask for 4,000 square foot homes or other things of that nature. Is that, is that correct?
So just one limit, it's not so arbitrary. The limitation there is these incentives and waivers and concessions exist to accommodate the density. So they could, they could request these things to the extent they need them for purposes of building 50 units, but they couldn't say 4,000 lots that are, if they didn't need it for purposes of developing 50 units.
So if 50 units, 50 units is the driver, it's not more than 50?
Yeah, as big as you, as big or small as you need, or rather as small as you need to accommodate the 50 units. But we're not going to go smaller and smaller and smaller.
Got it, okay.
Unless you're going to build more units.
Okay.
That's why not 61 and it's 50, sorry.
Well, no, that's exactly what I was going to say, but at what point, if the request is made for the deviation and, you know, the city makes the argument that you're making that no, that's not, that's in excess of what's needed relative to the density of the project, at what point does slash can the developer say, well, hey, I'm not even using my extra 11 units that I'm otherwise entitled to under this density bonus arrangement? So if you're not going to allow that lot size coverage ratio, you know, whatever it may be, then maybe this becomes a 55 or a 58 or a 61 unit project. Is that possible or would that require restarting the whole project?
The developer can change the project up to 20% without, so they can, they can increase or decrease the density up to 20% without restarting the SB 330 application process. So it's possible they could amend and resubmit.
So Director Gonzalez, sorry, mentioned these concessions, are these those unlimited waivers that are under SB 330? Are you using those anonymously? So unlimited waivers would be a concession. And so we've talked about it, if it's zoned, not land use, but zoned R 115, 15,000 square foot lot, the 15 part doesn't really matter anymore because they can ask for unlimited waivers.
Correct.
Well, the current, I mean.
Concession, that's the one concession.
That's the concession, not a waiver, okay.
I mean, the current plan submitted with the application shows a minimum lot size of 63, 75, so less than half.
And Mayor, just so just to clarify, the density bonus law contemplates four different benefits when you qualify. You get the density bonus, so more density. You get a certain number of incentives and slash concessions, depending on how many affordable units you put in. You get potentially unlimited number of waivers to accommodate that density and you get a preferential parking ratio. So now the city is fully incentivized to enforce as many of its development standards as possible if this SB 330 application goes through, while acknowledging the fact that we have to make these waivers to the extent they need it for purposes of the 50. If they don't, if they can't make the case that they need that waiver for purposes of 50 development, we're not going to grant it to them. So there's that practical limit on the waivers.
Thank you.
I have three more questions.
Please, please.
So, so do we have an idea of kind of, you had a nice table side by side comparing the two projects. Is that, that's not all the concessions we've gone through. Are there, like, do we have a total of the concessions that we've gotten out of this, this, what, now more than two-year? It's got to be more than two-year process, it's, you know, four or five-year process I think we're in now.
Councilmember Parker, I do have a partial list of about 32 items that we've documented. There's many more and I can go through some of the most impactful, if you'd like.
If you just hit a couple of them.
So one of them is, we reduced the maximum floor area ratio to 3,775 with an average floor area ratio of 3,500 square feet. Minimize design repetition to guarantee no repeated units on any single street. Planting 493 trees, a maintenance district to maintain the slope areas upon build-out. Increase setbacks to dedicate privacy buffers to neighbors on the east and south. A $5 million park, three-acre park. Establish a third legal lot above the retreat center, 250,000, we talked about that one already. Again, I have 32 items on the list and that's just a few of them.
One of the items was the two ingress and egress. I didn't see, does that change at all with the new project?
So the question, it would really go down to the environmental review because if that is a mitigation, if that's a part of the mitigation requirement for the EIR, then likely that would be included, that ingress and egress requirement would be included in the SB 330 application. But if it's a concession, that wasn't part of the mitigation monitoring program, then it wouldn't. So that's what it turns on.
So we could not have the widening at Carter and have that be narrower because they decided that they didn't need it or they didn't want it or whatever?
No, I think the widening at Carter was intended as part of the mitigation for the EIR for the environmental impacts, so that would likely be included in the SB 330 project.
And what happened to one of my favorite parts of this, the electrification? What happens with that under SB 330?
That would be lost for sure.
And then my final question, I know I've probably gone over three, my apologies. The, in the original Meadows project, we don't have any high-density housing, I'm not quite, I don't have the right, the exact right term, but we don't have any of the density bonus, what's that?
Oh, sorry.
The high-density housing that's there, that they're getting the bonus from, do we know, I mean, I, I know the developer's not here, so it's a little bit of speculation or maybe we can have the monastery talk about it. Do we know why there was no consideration of high-density housing that was included in the original?
Do you mean multifamily housing?
Yeah, multifamily, like the three ones that are down here at the bottom.
You mean the affordable?
Affordable, thank you, affordable units.
So are you asking why the affordable units aren't multifamily or are you asking why there weren't more affordable units?
Why weren't there any affordable units as a part of the Meadows project? Do we know, do we know the answer to that? I don't expect you necessarily to know the answer to that, but maybe, you know, when it's public comment, it'd be helpful to know. Because, you know, that actually helps Rena numbers.
It does, it does. And that's, if I recall correctly, that was a business decision made by the applicant because we don't control the unit types submitted, whether they're affordable or not, that's the applicant's decision. And that was a business decision made by the applicant early on in the process.
So if we wanted to, if we wanted to have 30 homes on that, that's not a decision that we could make?
No, I mean, we could, we could always limit it through the, to the extent we can through the zoning code or the general plan, but, you know, we couldn't require more units. That's the applicant's.
Or less homes overall. We couldn't require that. Once it's R 115, it's minimum 15,000 square foot lots and that's the number of homes you get, right? And then you follow on with the concessions and all of that.
The base density is, the base density would be 50 and they could accommodate, to the extent they could accommodate 50 on that lot, that's what they would get. Not, you know, obviously they have to figure out streets and debris basins, et cetera, yeah.
Okay. But to your point, I mean, we actually did reduce the number of proposed houses in the Meadows project from the beginning to the end as part of the negotiation process. I mean, it wasn't 30, but we did reduce from the original proposal to 42, so.
That's right. What was the original?
I think it was 48 or 49 is my recollection, but I shouldn't say for sure.
Basically going back to where it was.
Close.
Some level with losing the park and, I'm sorry, I shouldn't start discussion.
More questions?
With the basin where the park would have been, but where the collection of water would be, that also does not have to be up to 100% aside from emergencies like we had yesterday. We would not be required to retain 100% of the water like we bargained for in the Meadows project.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. All of these applications are going to be subject to the Sier Madre Low-Impact Development Ordinance and that is the 85th percentile 24-hour storm. So they're going to be required to capture approximately 1.13 inches of water over 24 hours. Now, they're still going to have to design grading to design for a 50-year storm. So as soon as that lid is filled up, it becomes flood control and that's where the drainage and those type of designs come into effect.
You said 1.13 over, or 1.3 over 24?
Yes, yes, and it goes down, it's between 1.3 inches and 1.06 inches depending on how high you are in the city.
What did we get in the last 24 hours?
More than that.
Councilmember Garcia, any more questions?
Mr. Senior Manager, how many inches of rain do we get in the last 24 hours?
We recorded rain at two different sites. At the city yard, we recorded just over four inches. At the Sier Madre Dam, we recorded just over five inches of rain.
What impact potentially would that have on this retention basis as in this design?
Well, that's, I was trying to explain, lid is for capture and water quality and then the 50-yard grading and drainage is for flood control. So it would basically fill up the retention to the required amount, then it would follow the existing drainage pattern, the storm sewer system and everything that's already in effect.
So it would shed down Crestvale?
But we would capture 1.13 before it started going down.
In the last 24 hours, three-quarters of it would be going down Crestvale?
So when Councilmember Garcia was coming home, he might have hit flooded streets if that were the case?
Yes. Yes. But the retention would capture, you know, approximately a quarter of it. So it would be, it would be reduced by 25% of the effect of the drainage.
And in the Meadows project, how much, what's the difference between the 330 and the Meadows project in retention?
It's the same. It's because it's going to, it's going to fall back on an existing ordinance, our low-impact development ordinance and our grading and drainage ordinance.
We've been talking a lot about the differences in the, in the projects. Maybe, and maybe this is for the next agenda item, so stop me if that's the case, but I had some questions about the election choices or should we wait for the next? Okay.
So as far, as far as waivers are concerned, if they could come up with a compelling reason why they don't need to replant as many trees, could they ask and be granted a waiver outside our general plan specifics on replanting trees?
Well, so if, again, it goes back to the environmental analysis. They're trying to piggyback off of the EIR that's already been certified, so they're going to be bound by what's in that EIR and all the mitigation monitoring for that. If they want to vary from that, they'll have to do a new EIR, which I know they're not going to do.
Okay, great. And that kind of brings another question. So we talked, you talked about different levels of EIR, supplemental or a couple other different ones. Who's the decider of what level of SEQA analysis needs to be performed?
Director Gonzalez.
I have a question about the different, like, meetings that we would be able to have. We're able to have five meetings. They wouldn't be like the 13 we had because we don't have the ability to really make some of those decisions as like the planning commission did and then we ultimately did. So the planning commission was able to have those meetings and make adjustments and ask different variations of the plan to the developer and then you got consensus from different community members and then requests. But in this, it doesn't look like we really have the ability to approve or deny any of those things.
Yeah, so the Housing Accountability Act is, in my mind, the biggest issue here. Because what happens generally during planning commission meetings is the planning commission says, I don't like this, I don't like that. And I'm letting you know, you can, you can ask us to make a vote, you can ask us to vote on it. We're letting you know, if we don't like it, you're probably, we're probably going to vote it down, right? And they can vote it down because they can make certain discretionary findings like the project doesn't fit with the, for the designer review permit, it's like, doesn't fit with the neighborhood. It's not exactly what it says, but it says something like that. That's a relatively subjective finding that wouldn't hold up under SB 330. That is pretty easy to support. Our planning commission is sophisticated and they can make, they can include the facts necessary to deny a project based on that finding. But if they're deprived of that tool, then what the planning commission is going to do is they're going to say, we don't like your project because XYZ. And then the developer is going to say, well, you know, what are you going to do to stop me from pushing this through? And then we're going to say, please, and that's it.
And isn't actually the discrepancy in number of hearings between the two projects actually a little greater than on the chart? Because we had 13 meetings, but we would be able to have five more under the second phase of the Meadows project, right? So really, we would have 18, potentially 18 meetings for the Meadows project and limited to five total for the 330 project?
Correct. And, you know, we put, we put 13 hearings, but that doesn't include the workshops, other virtual events that took place. We're not including any of those in the 13 number, so it's actually even greater than you're pointing out, Councilmember Crease, but yes. It'd be 13 plus potentially five for the second phase of the Meadows project.
Does it include the joint session we had?
It includes the joint session we had, yeah.
Would it be, because for a lot of people watching this, they're probably scratching their heads going, why is it? why is this SB 330, why is the state so interested in usurping our discretion here at the local level? Would you say it's fair to say that the state has an agenda and has had one for a while, that they don't want localities to exercise the kind of control we used to, because they perceive that there's not enough housing in the state? And that this is kind of a tidal wave that's washing over us? Is that, would you say that's an overstatement?
No, I think, I think that's accurate, Councilmember, there's, the state, everyone recognizes we're in a housing crisis. The state identifies, has identified in, in prior legislation, I think it's four primary obstacles that they pointed out, one is obviously cost of labor, one is capital, one is available land, and the third, and the fourth they've always pointed out is local restrictions. And when they look at these four, the one the state has the most control over are the local restrictions, and so they've really come down hard on cities and limited our ability to limit development in our cities.
So when we're talking about a five-meeting limit, there's a reason for that. They really don't want us to spend a lot of time discussing that project, do they?
Correct.
They want to put a time limit on it, flat out. And we did thirteen meetings plus workshops on the last one prior to an SB 330 concern, so there's a huge difference here, is that correct? I mean, it's from a theoretical point of view, it's just like night and day.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody who's watching this at home understands why we're having this conversation.
Is it fair to say that, because this is something we talked about as part of the Meadows deliberations, is it fair to say that the SB 330 application puts us in a similar position as we would have been had the property owner submitted a project under the then-current zoning and land use designation, an institutional project? Similarly, we would have been constrained in some ways to the level of discretion we would have had in approving that, because they wouldn't have been asking for a zoning and land use variance, so that, I mean, we're similarly constrained.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, all these laws apply to what's called, the state has termed housing development projects. An institutional development is not a housing development project, the city would have full discretion in the way it does with the Alverno project, in, in making sure that it meets whatever standards we want it to meet.
Okay, so, all right.
I think I have two more, anybody else have questions right now? I think I have two more that, Director Gonzalez mentioned that as we look at the map, there were, on the southeast corner, those were the three very low housing units, we would request to have it dispersed throughout the project, is that just a request? Or was that one of those please and please requests, or would that be something we can enforce?
No, that would be something we can enforce, that was, that's part of our zoning, so.
Great, okay, thank you. And then, second, I'm not sitting in a deposition, so I can't get asked and answered, and I know you mentioned this in, in your presentation, but had the proponents or the petitioners of the referendum repealed the resolution as well, we would not be sitting and having this conversation right now.
Correct, we wouldn't be in this position right now had the referendum proponents referented both the resolution and the ordinance, and and I want to just reemphasize, the city council's hands are pretty tied when it comes to the referendum, there isn't much the city council can do at this point, except decide an election date or decide to repeal the ordinance, or decide to repeal the ordinance, correct. The referendum proponents, however, can choose through their, through exercising withdrawal, whether the SB 330 application gets built or the Meadows project gets built.
So effectively, by not withdrawing, they're saying they want the SB 330 project?
Something will be built, and it's just going to depend on what gets built.
Okay, thank you. More questions before we go to public comment, you've been very patient, I'd like to hear the public comment. You good? Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have a number of speaker cards received, there are seven total. The first speaker is Father Michael Higgins, followed by Howard Hayes.
Good evening. Congratulations on the council elections, and I want to begin by wishing you all a most blessed New Year, it's a great time of year. I am Father Michael Higgins, of the Passionists of Holy Cross Province, and I currently live at Morro de la Rosa Retreat Center. All of us at Morro de la Rosa, and the many people we serve in the community who followed the city's review of the Meadows at Bailey Canyon project, were very pleased and thankful when this council overwhelmingly approved the Meadows plan. We were even more pleased and even more grateful when the people of Sieramadre followed your approval with their equally overwhelming rejection of Measure HR. I firmly believe that those victories were achieved in large part because throughout its review of the Meadows project, the city worked hard to protect the public interests and found in New Urban West and Morro de la Rosa willing partners in that pursuit. The result was a more sensitively designed Meadows project with more public benefits, and the people of Sieramadre expressed their thanks for your hard work and they voted down Measure HR. Despite how clearly the public spoke, opponents of the Meadows now are asking you to put everything on hold for nearly two years, so they can put their referendum before voters who have already rejected them twice. They do so at the risk of losing all the public benefits you negotiated to the Meadows plan, because the developer should be forced to wait nearly two years for a vote, only to face whatever challenges Protect Sieramadre will come up with next. Instead, they are free to simply file a new plan, which they have done, in order to take advantage of new state laws that will ensure a quicker and more certain review process. These new laws do not require the sort of amenities and benefits that are in the approved Meadows plan, and most, if not all, of those valuable benefits could well disappear. The power to avoid losing the many benefits you have worked so hard to build into the project lies with the Protect Sieramadre group. They can continue their campaign of opposition to the project and put the Meadows benefit package at risk. If they withdrew their referendum.
Father Higgins, if you can wrap it up, we're three minutes, thank you. You can finish the thought, but please wrap it up.
If I could remember what.
I'm sorry, I jumped in.
I'm sorry.
Everyone gets equal time here, so.
If they withdrew their referendum, there's only a couple lines left, is that all right?
Yeah, I.
Or I'll just say thank you.
I think, yeah, I appreciate your comment, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Howard Hayes, followed by Dee Alcorn.
I know, a week and a half in, but Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And I'm Howard, I'm up on Sycamore Place, just north of Grandview. And, sounds kind of weird, but I'm here to speak in defense of SB 330. It is a very important measure, signed into law by our governor with a very serious purpose, to address the problem of affordable housing. And now it's regrettable that we have this developer, it's being cynically used as a means, as a vehicle, to force this cluster of forty-seven, three-thousand-square-foot mini mansions on the community. Now, in order to do so, of course, they're adding those three houses, which are a mere two-thousand feet. And they are claiming that they qualify for SB 330 because each of those three houses somehow are affordable to what they call, not just low, but very low-income residents. Now, I'm not going to be, I don't need to be cynical myself, but what I'm looking forward to is I'm looking forward to seeing how they can maintain the pretense that a brand-new, two-thousand-square-foot house in Sieramadre is somehow affordable to a very low-income resident. Now, I've seen, I've seen very different formulas in different places on how to define very low income. Sometimes, some of it I've read, like, maybe thirty percent of half the income, half the median income of an area resident. Now, in this area, the median income is a hundred-six thousand dollars, so do the math. And when we talk about affordability and housing expenses, we're not just talking about whether they can buy the house, we're talking about ongoing property taxes and insurance and maintenance and utilities. And in some of those formulas, it works out that to afford that house, they would have to, it could be no less than, say, maybe sixteen thousand a year in housing expenses. Great, I'll take two of those houses. So, right now, I would like to see how the developer is going to continue and maintain this pretense that those three houses somehow qualify as very low income, because if they can't, they do not qualify for SB 30 in the first place, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Mayor, Dee Alcorn, followed by Pat Alcorn.
Well, I could say, we have, Happy New Year, you folk, we haven't done that, and also, again, congratulations to the people who were re-elected, and to the new elected person on the council, congratulations. One of the things I'd like to say is that the opponents to this Meadows project are shooting the messenger, they're shooting the messenger. If they aren't happy with making the Meadows project possible, they should talk to the people responsible, their state legislature. Sacramento has been very aggressive in pushing for housing in the state. I think you're all familiar with one of them, it's RENA, right, you hear about RENA? Okay. As part of this, they have severely preempted control of housing, planning, and development. The state has passed laws such as the Meadows, such that the Meadows project cannot be stopped. I repeat, it cannot be stopped. New Urban West has a state on its side, that's the law, they're on their side. The Meadows project will be developed. There are one of two choices for the Meadows project, one, fifty houses with no concessions and minimal oversight, or two, forty-two houses with significant concessions, benefits, and major oversight. One of these projects will happen, one of these projects will happen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alcorn.
Mr. Mayor, Pat Alcorn, followed by Allison Snow.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Pat Alcorn, I live on Grandview. How ironic is it that you have before you a preliminary application for a fifty-home subdivision? This project is identical to the Meadows project, except for an additional eight homes, less open space, less city oversight, and zero benefits, such as a park and funds for water and safety. This one will be governed by the state mandates and will take away most of your discretion that you have. City Council has answered most of the questions that I have, so I will skip down to to one part of saying that it is worthy to note that your next agenda item will have full bearing on this project. Those who have presented to the city a referendum to kill previously adopted project will basically force the developer and the city to accept this one. There will be a housing project on the grounds of Morro de la Rosa, which one will it be? More houses, or more benefits? It's up to the referendum proponents, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn.
Mr. Mayor, Allison Snow, followed by Robert Jarday.
Mayor and City Council, nice to meet you. I have downloaded the text for SB 330, and there is a paragraph in the text that states, "In this section," sorry, "this section shall not apply to a housing development project located within a very high fire hazard severity zone." And I have downloaded a map that shows the entirety of Sieramadre anywhere above Grandview Avenue as being in the high-fire-hazard severity zone. So my question is, how can the developer apply for a project using SB 330 when the monastery is in a very high-fire severity zone?
Thank you, Ms. Snow.
Mr. Mayor, Robert.
Could I, I'd like to get the take from the city attorney on that, I think that's a very important question.
It's a very good question, and it's not clear from the statute when people read it in the first instance. But Ms. Snow is correct, that provision does exist in SB 330, Ms. Snow is also correct that that portion of the city is within the very high-fire hazard severity zone. However, if you continue to read that provision, you'll see that it's, if it's located in the higher-fire-hazard severity zone, but you can build the project to mitigate the very, the high-fire-hazard risk, then it proceeds. And I could provide citation for that.
And that would be under SEQA?
No, 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 that's, that's under the housing laws.
Okay.
And that's, and that's a commonly understood, you go to any city, the ADU ordinance has similar provisions, SB nine has similar provisions, the Housing Crisis Act has similar provisions. This interpretation I provided is commonly understood across all cities, that's why you have all the cities that are in high-fire-hazard severity zones, Calabasas, Ojai, all the mountain towns, Arcadia, they all follow, they all allow homes under SB nine in these fire hazard severity zones, because our building standards allow for development that's, that has fire mitigation aspects built into it.
Thank you, city attorney. Mr. Jarday.
Robert Jarday, Vista Circle. I don't support New Urban West's plan to build fifty homes, but I understand why they've submitted it. They're left no choice with the referendum. They've already invested in the city and in development here. They're not going to walk away, no matter how much some people wish they would. And that really is what the referendum is all about, wishful thinking with no end game. How in the world does a group of people opposing development screw up so badly that all this work for the specific plan ends up with a developer building more homes and asking us for concessions? Please do whatever it takes to hold New Urban West to the agreement to build the forty-two homes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarday.
Mr. Mayor, John Capocha, followed by Philip Yow.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and the City Council, and congratulations on being elected. This is really simple to me, basically, we've got, there are two possibilities on the table. One is the Meadows project, the other is the SB 330, which increases the number of homes. The likely outcome is that the Meadows project will be successful, because if the referendum passes, you essentially, those who would vote for that referendum would be voting for a fifty-house development instead of the forty-two-home development. How on earth does anybody believe that Sieramadre would vote for such a thing? So now, here we are in a position where we're going to spend three-hundred-thousand-plus dollars that could be used for improving sidewalks, streets, et cetera, to a predetermined outcome. So I would just ask that the proponents of this referendum, please, for the benefit of Sieramadre and all the citizens and taxpayers in this town, please, just withdraw it, and let's get on to the most likely outcome anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Capocha.
Mr. Mayor, Philip Yow. Mr. Mayor, Philip Yow, followed by Alex Arietta.
Hello, Phil Yow, 51th Street, Sierra Keys. Just bring us back a little bit, just to, I guess, remind us, I think the mayor mentioned that we have a certain charm in Sierra Madre, when you addressed the historical housing. The other, the other facts that I want to remind us of is what Gary Hood brought out. There was some, there's some really valid points in there. And we're going through those same things right again. We're stepping in the same hole, we just haven't learned to walk around it. I can't understand why. I have a whole set of prepared notes, not going to go through it, but I did look at, I did try to understand some of the discussion as to the two columns of data, 330 versus Meadows. And I'm technically minded, I'm in engineering. I find that analysis to be totally, totally, I guess, let me just put it nicely, it's not well-done, okay? We were told that there were 32 concessions being asked for. We have not evaluated, you know, what those concessions are. What upper hand do we hold? We've raised a flag and we're defeatist, with our defeatist attitude that says, oh, we're done for. We either consider 50, with three of them being like servants' homes. Can you, I would be not proud to look at, you know, a map like that, on the southeast corner with three little lots, with three little houses, I'll buy two of them if that's the case, you know? But, and, and they, the other gentleman had pointed out that that is, in fact, a pretense. Take a look at it. Why? Okay? Why do, you know, why are we so intent on just granting 32 concessions? Things like building heights, setback, lot coverage, we own those. You are responsible to actually preserve those for the greater good of Sierra Madre. Okay? If you want to build like many of the communities that I've seen around us, by golly, you know, it's, the charm of Sierra Madre is gone, lost forever. And the facts that Gary Hood had pointed out, in fact, well, that was a long time ago. Never happened again, just like Camelota, perhaps. So my, my little two cents right now is that, you know, this defeatist attitude that, oh, either we have column A or column B. We're not a Chinese restaurant place. So let's do one thing. Let's present a very good analysis to the council here, have us be able to review it, don't make it like the Water Net Zero thing again. That was a fiasco, we know that. And please, work on behalf of the citizens of Sierra Madre, okay? Not New Urban West, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yow.
Mr. Mayor, Alex Arietta.
There's certainly some confusion regarding the referendum in regards to the timing. And I'm particularly concerned about how, because two components weren't referended that we're in this position. However, in truth, it was the city's premature adoption of Resolution 2258 that changed the general plan that resulted in this SB 330 mess. And we were very clear, we were very explicit months ago, that we were going to be filing a referendum. We pleaded and said, please hold, hold, hold off on the election for several months, let this play out, or else we're going to have a mess. And here we are, we have a mess. So we won't take responsibility for saying, we're in this mess because the referendum, we're in this mess because the City Council, at the city attorney's advice, was anxious to push through this project. When they knew the referendum was coming, before the election was happening, wouldn't even let the residents have the right to exercise their vote. And you'll hear, oh, the initiative was soundly defeated. The initiative was soundly defeated? Well, New Urban West paid five public relations firms hundreds of thousands of dollars to spread misinformation about the initiative. Okay? So you want to talk honesty, you want to talk candor, you want to talk campaign misinformation? That is what happened, and that is what occurred. So now, we have this 50-home debacle issue, and now they are saying, we have you over a barrel. Either approve this, or that's it. And this is why we've also said as recently as, well, I don't know, when we started this process a couple of years ago, there was zero level of trust for New Urban West, New Urban West across the community. Zero trust. And it's particularly because of reasons like this. They can come back and put through something between Christmas and New Year's, when people are on their holiday, hey, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, now we have this SB 330 project in your face. You better approve this project, and you better get those folks to withdraw the referendum, because we're just going to ram this thing through. No respect for the City Council, no respect for the residents of Sierra Madre, and someone made the comment earlier about, oh, hey, the 42-home thing is in character of Sierra Madre. 38 of the proposed 42 homes are two-story, okay? And there's been multiple analysis of the homes in the surrounding community, less than 10 percent, I think, are two-story. So please, enough of the facade that there was something going on there. I plead with the City Council, see, see through this, and don't be led around by an out-of-town developer who's just motivated by greed at any expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arietta.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards for this item.
Anybody that did not turn a speaker card in want to speak? Please.
I'm Jim Richmond. I used to be the mayor of Burbank, so I know a little bit about housing development in Burbank. There aren't, isn't any. You notice that? None, zero. So now you've got a developer who's saying, tales you win, no, tales I lose, no. He's threatening you. This wonderful developer that came to town is now giving you a threat. Now, you going to live with that threat? You going to react to that threat? Are you going to give in to that threat? Mr. Attorney, how many cities have been sued for not changing a zone?
As a former mayor, you should know this is public comment, not public Q and A.
Well, it's a question.
It is, yes.
Yeah. Why don't you ask him? There hasn't been a city sued for not changing a zone. Would you like to ask him? I think everybody here would like to know.
For not changing a zone, what do you, I'm?
Yeah, has a city been sued for not changing a zone, a zoning law?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Could you rephrase it?
So somebody says, I want this area rezoned so I can do this. And the city says, no.
Yeah, this isn't dialogue. We had a binary decision, right? Institutional or rezoning.
Oh, okay. So what if you don't change the zone?
Then it stayed, it would have stayed institutional. We'd have institutional project.
Okay, so nothing happens.
No, an institutional project.
Well, what's he going to do? Put some industrial area up there? Not a chance.
I'm not going to dialogue with you anymore, but continue your public comment, please.
Okay. If you would have made that decision a year and a half ago, no, we're not going to change the zone, we wouldn't be in this mess of, of a threat, of blackmail. This wonderful developer is giving you, what? If you don't do this, I'm going to really mess you up. How do you like being threatened like that? I don't think anybody here likes being threatened. Uh, that's a threat. It's a threat. You going to live with that, or you going to fight it?
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Keep the applause down.
Mr. Mayor.
It disincentivizes people from talking from both sides. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Watson, happy to be here tonight. As a member of this community, I'm just one voice, but I think if you just practically look at it, you, the voices have been heard repeatedly over months and months and months. And in fact, we took a vote. And the citizens of Sierra Madre, after respectfully listening to our neighbors who disagree with us, voted to defeat HR. And so I think the majority of the people of Sierra Madre agree with, with the City Council's decision to let this project proceed. And so I would respectfully, and we're not fools, you know, we, we listen with our ears to everything that's said and try to form the best-informed decision that we can. And I think that took place in our election. And so to completely keep trying to rehearse this over and over again and say the same things that have been said over and over again is really pretty much a waste of time. And I would respectfully ask my neighbors who disagree with me to withdraw their referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Watson.
No other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify?
Yes, please.
Three points are raised during public comment.
Yeah, yeah, please.
If I could go back to the very-high-fire-hazard severity zone issue that was raised, I just looked up the statute really quickly, just to confirm my understanding, and one thing I noticed is it says, "A very-high-fire-hazard severity zone," as defined by Government Code Section 51178. That section states that it's a very-high-fire-hazard severity zone designated by the state fire marshal. Now, it's my understanding, and Director Gonzalez can correct me if I'm wrong, if he knows off the top of his head, but that very-high-fire, very-high-fire-hazard severity zone designation in Sierra Madre is a local designation, not a state designation. So that's one important distinction.
Just for clarification, it actually is a state designation.
Okay.
Cal OES.
Thank you for the clarification, Director. The, the next, the next point is regarding the affordable housing. So the way affordable housing is calculated is, for very-low-income housing, it has to be within, I think it's 30 percent of the median income of Los Angeles County. So it's not just Sierra Madre. So you look at all of Los Angeles County.
Thirty to 50 percent, but we had that part of our housing element that we approved about a year ago, and it was approved by the state, yes.
Correct. So, so between 30 and 50 percent. Now, the way we make sure that's affordable is first we put a covenant on it, so it can't be sold to someone that, so it couldn't be sold to any resident likely in Sierra Madre unless they were making, unless their income met that threshold. So it's not that they're going to present a home and put it up on the market for just anyone to purchase. That, that's not how that process proceeds. The last point I just wanted to make is that the, from the beginning, the city recognized that the developer had a profit motive. But we knew that we had, and the developer understood that we had all the negotiating power, because we were the ones, the city was the one that controlled the land use designation. And once that land use designation was changed, the general plan was changed, the city lost that power. So we're still dealing with the same developer, who's, who's obviously profit-driven because they're a business. The difference now is that our negotiating power has been stripped from us.
I, I know we're on discussion, but going back to the very-low-income designation that's within our, our housing element, and it depends on how many in the household, et cetera. How is that enforced? And you said there's a covenant, is there, is there something on the deed, or what, what happens? That's a, it's strange because it's an income designation, it could be a wealthy person with very-low income. But it's a state law, right? Not a city or Sierra Madre law, and we're bound by state law.
Yeah, it's actually both. It's a, the state density bonus law exists, and Sierra Madre has, we have our own ordinance that implements that state density bonus law. So in our municipal code, we have the provisions laid out regarding what the standards are or how the, what the enforcement is for, for-sale properties, which is different than rental properties. In truth, in Sierra Madre, we've only dealt with rental affordables that I'm aware of. I think our, I think we're currently dealing with one.
Property on Suffolk.
For-sale, that's going to have a covenant. Maybe Director can elaborate on that.
Please.
Now, there is one proposed project, or that was approved, that will have a for-sale unit, but we also had three other for-sale units, which was the, now the name just escaped me, but the Highland Muse, across the street from the Sierra Madre Elementary School. Those are three condominium for-sale units that were sold at moderate income.
And that is enforced by the city?
It's enforced by the city through covenants, codes, and restrictions as part of the development, and of course, with enforcement through the contract with the, the developer and now the property owners, and that's recorded with the county.
Thank you, yes, please.
Follow-up to that, as I recall, we not only stipulated income and kept it to a certain level, but we also, I think, stipulate certain professions, right?
Professions.
Veteran status and things like that. So if you'd thrown that on the open market, that would have been, those would, houses would have sold for probably double, or the condos probably double, maybe, or quite a bit higher. But we did have the power through the covenants to put a limit on it. And that's how this is achieved, right? Through SB 330.
Thank you, Director.
And, and the, the covenants and restrictions are perpetual, meaning that you can't sort of arbitrage the, the low-income requirements, buy it at a low rate, and then, you know, turn around and sell it at market rates. That's a continuing?
It would be restricted generally to a 50-year covenant.
Thank you.
I had a question. Originally with the Meadows plan, it was an HOA. Now, would the SB 330 be an HOA? And in that effect, if you were a low-income, you wouldn't necessarily be able to afford HOA fees?
We haven't gotten to that phase yet, so I don't think we know at this point. We don't know.
More comments from the council? This is receive and file, but.
Well, I think, you know, one of the things is the 32 concessions, I think it's important to stay, well, first, before I go, go there, I just want to thank all the community for the input. You know, this has been a long process, these are long meetings. I always learn something in this, you know? I learn more about the high-fire-hazard severity zone. I've been determined to get that right. I think I got it. But I, I really appreciate that, and appreciate the, kind of the thoughtful, the questioning, because that's what's going to make this, you know, a, a thoughtful decision on it, is that we have to, to consider all of the information before us. And I think, you know, one of the things in my mind, the, the 32 items that we've got, it's not concessions from the city, it is things the city has received for it, it's things that we have, we have negotiated that, to our benefit in this. And I think that that's a significant thing for us to take in mind, is that if we go down, if we don't go down this route, the years and years that we've spent on this, that goes away, it actually goes, not back to zero, but it goes negative, because, because of new laws that have taken into account. And what I really worry is, is that, you know, if, if, and, and this goes into the referendum, but what we have done with, what we have before us with this 330 plan is, is more homes, more traffic, more water use, more greenhouse gas emissions, and potentially higher taxes, because we've got close to $2 million that we'll have, that will, between what we lose and what we have to spend for this project versus the Meadows project. And so I think it's really important, it's one of the things that is going through my mind in thinking about this, is this is a tough decision, I don't take this lightly. Not that we're making a decision tonight, but when I evaluate this and thinking about how to provide guidance to the city and, and vote on items, I'm really looking at that. And, and, you know, I think that we've got to look at what we've got in front of us, and we've got to look at what has been presented to us and what is the available choices. It, it, it is, quite frankly, it is a Chinese menu. It's not anything off the table. At this point, that's where we're at. Two years ago, when I started here, it wa, it was a lot more choices, and we have worked to get to where we are. We have made decisions, we have lobbied for things. We did not have electrification at the beginning of this process. We got that. We didn't have a widening of Carter. We got that. We didn't have a million dollars for water. We got that. These are things that we have gotten. And what I worry is, is that if we, we're at a. And what I worry is, is that if we're at a very critical point, a very critical point in a short period of time here to make something that is, for two decisions that are drastically different and drastically different benefits to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers.
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully disagree. This is not a hard decision. The hard decision we made earlier last year, the hard decision was the approval of the Meadows Project. And we spent a lot of time reviewing that. We spent that time, we observed and got the benefit of all the time that the planning commission spent on it. That was a difficult decision. And we debated it. And we, in the meeting where we actually approved it, most of us, if not all of us, went through all of the considerations, the topics that have been of utmost concern that we've heard from the public, and went through each one, one by one, and how we reconciled the decision we were making against the concerns that were expressed. That was the hard decision. The hard decision was made. We made that decision. And this is not a hard decision. I mean, this is just not a hard decision. All of the same considerations that we struggled with with respect to the Meadows Project are present and then some in this new project. And frankly, this isn't actually even a decision. Because we don't get to decide whether it's this one or the Meadows Project that we already approved. And we don't get to decide anything about the, very little about the 330 application. So there really is no decision. I mean, I don't mean, I don't actually disagree with you. I'm just pointing out that the nomenclature is that there, this is not a hard decision, and in fact, it's not a decision.
Yes.
Well said, both of you. I'd like to add to this, though. I'm, how many times have I heard in public comment over the last two years? The people have spoken. We have 1,300 signatures on a petition to have a ballot initiative, let the people speak. And they did. And that particular point of view lost. And it wasn't even close. Let's not kid ourselves. I was out walking the city for eight weeks prior to that election. I talked to people about their decision-making. And they weren't being buffaloed by cheap ads by New Urban West. Those people, people took a look at this, just as Miss, just as a comment from a lady earlier. She said, "The people aren't stupid. People understand these issues." And there was a lot of information. People were talking to each other's neighbors about it. People are connected in various webs across the city. They read in the Mountain Views News. People knew a lot about this. And as far as I'm concerned, I just have a hard time hearing that the will of the people somehow, as expressed in November, is somehow suspect. I have, I consider it sacrosanct. And so I feel like maybe the people who pushed this initiative that we voted down and who are interested in this referendum, maybe ought to take a harder look at themselves. Are they really serious about this? Are they really advocating to us tonight that if we have to make a choice, as, and I think former Mayor Capote put it best, one of these two projects, you can wish away all the consequences all you like, but in the real world, real people have to make real decisions. And we're going to be faced with either a 50-unit development with very little control, with loss of all the benefits that have been negotiated with, or we're going to get the Meadows Project, which the public has already signed off on. I hope the proponents of this measure will take a hard look at this, sit down, look in the mirror, and reconsider this and pull this referendum. I think that's the responsible thing to do.
Thank you.
One thing that I think is interesting, and I've got friends on both sides of everything. I value difference of opinions, and you know I'm never shy of stating my own opinion. But it always is a little confusing when we're looking at comparing things. And before, it was like we had the ability to make these choices. We came up with plans, and when we didn't like that, people could say what they liked and what they didn't like, and we changed that. And the difference between the word concessions, I think we've used the word concessions, though, when we meant waivers. So in the new SB 330 plan, they aren't concessions that are being requested, and we grant them. They're actual waivers that they are allowed to have, if I'm correct. They are not concessions that we have the ability to approve or deny. Those are actual waivers. So when we are looking at a menu of this or this, that is what we are brought with. We can't make any other decisions. That isn't in our realm of ability. It's not in anyone else's realm of ability. It's either that or that. So if the referendum, which has been almost certified and approved, we are faced with that decision. There isn't an ability for us to control which concessions we want and which we don't. The concessions were what we already came up with and asked for from New Urban West that benefit our city. That's not a question anymore. So when people have those comments, I'm sorry, it's not that we can control anything and help you. That's where we're stuck. That's where our hands are tied now. And we are, you know, if, whether you want to argue whether we put ourselves in that or we were put in that position, either way, it's what it is now. And we make the best decisions we possibly can, but we also need you guys to help us all understand what you want, what we're able to help with. Otherwise, we aren't able to help. So that's why we appreciate all your input, and that's why we spent 13 meetings plus going through the planning commission of hours and hours. We were here till like midnight some of those nights, listening and listening. So that's why I also agree that I think the best benefit would be if we didn't have the referendum, we would be able to follow through with this. Otherwise, we could potentially cost our city $400,000 that we, as a city, are paying for.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. I mean, it's hard to expand on what has already been said here. Yeah, that's an important thing to understand, our purview and what we can do up here. We have decisions that are brought before us. We're not allowed to go rogue and freestyle and come up with our own decisions that aren't on an agenda or aren't brought before us. We can't say, we've been told and we see it, we see on social media, why is the city building these homes? We're not, we're not building the homes. Somebody is selling a piece of property and wants to build homes. We had two, we had a binary decision. Do we want an institutional, and all the impacts that go with an institutional type of project? Or do we want this housing project that we did receive concessions on? That's the decision before the council, and that was the decision we made to counsel our mayor Pro Tem Krebs' comment. That was a hard decision. Hundreds of hours. Ask my wife. The amount of time that I spent at my dining room table, every single planning commission meeting that I watched, maybe I was out of town. I was watching in a hotel room from YouTube. I watched every single one of those, and I think everyone here at the DIAZ did as well. The hundreds of hours that the planning commission put into this. I think, and it's been mentioned, the project only got approved because of the dissension and comments, right? So we need people to dissent and comment and to make these things better. We make better decisions, and we have a better project compared to what we started with because of dissension. Don't stop doing that. But you please understand our purview and what we can and cannot do. This is a receive and file report. We can't decide that we don't want to do this. There's a state law in effect, and we have to, if they want to tomorrow, they can go, they can go through and start this project and pull the Meadows Project, and we're stuck with it. And there's nothing we can do. That's a very important thing to understand.
Can I make a follow up real quick? The fiscal condition of our government is, it was a lot better up until the last year or so. We're still in okay shape, but I remember our last discussion, right in the last council in December over the possible subsidization of the Playhouse. And we came to a collective conclusion that we didn't have enough money in our current services budget or in our reserves to help the Playhouse with their capital campaign. We did contribute $56,000 from federal ARPA funds that we'd received during COVID, but that didn't come out of our operating budget or our reserves. So we're talking about possibly $300,000, $400,000 hit here, folks. The proponent, I'm talking to the proponents of this referendum. $300,000, you know what that would buy in city services? I think that this is not, we're not just at the, we're not at the roulette wheel here in Vegas. There are real consequences to the decision to put this referendum on the ballot, assuming it loses. And I'm sure, I'm positive that it would lose. We're out that money, so just wanted to throw that in.
Yeah, I mean, that's an important point, Councilmember Goss.
We're bleeding into the next agenda.
Yeah, I don't want to get too, yeah, let's get to the next agenda unless we want to talk about SB 330 anymore. Thank you, Mary Pro Tem. Okay, that's a receive and file. So we're now on to discussion item number four, which is the certification of petition signatures for the referendum to repeal. Council ordinance number 1461. Is that being presented by you, City Clerk Aguilar?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I will be presenting that report this evening. And this will be a natural transition from the previous discussion item. Just a little bit of background, which City Attorney Garagosian touched on earlier. The city council approved resolution 2258 back in September and read for first reading ordinance number 1461. At the following council meeting, the city council adopted for second reading ordinance 1461, which would have been effective 30 days later. But before that 30-day deadline, proponent Barbara Valturo submitted an intention to circulate a petition to repeal ordinance 1461 and effectively pausing the effectiveness of ordinance 1461, which is where we still are currently. Now, the proponent, Barbara Valturo, and the members who circulated the petition had 30 days to gather sufficient signatures. The number of signatures needed were 856. There were 1,495 signatures submitted. 273 were disqualified, and a total of 1,222 signatures were qualified. The city clerk's office conducted the primary examination and submitted the signatures to the county for a secondary inspection, which was upheld, which upheld the city clerk's office decision. So before the city council tonight is the request to certify the petition signatures so that the referendum to repeal ordinance 1461 is certified. The city council, upon certification, will have the decision to either repeal ordinance 1461, put the measure to the voters in either a special election or a regular election. And the regular election, as we discussed in the previous discussion, is in November 2024. Special election would be up until then. And also, your remaining option would be to direct the city attorney to provide a report regarding the impact of the referendum and set a measure to the vote, to the voters after evaluating the city attorney's report. The soonest that the city council could bring this to the voters is April 11th. Assuming that the city council decides to hold a special election and bring this to the voters on April 11th, the deadline to call for that election is Friday, January 13th, which is this upcoming Friday. That would give 88 days for the calling of the election to the actual election day. The deadline to call for the election is the same deadline for the proponent Valturo to withdraw the referendum. So it's the same deadline for both. It is estimated that the cost of the election for April 11th would be about $325,000. To hold the election any other day in 2023 would be closer to $400,000. And to put this off until November 2024 would be the most cost-effective option because it is a presidential election and the cost would be shared with federal and state and local agencies. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, City Clerk Aguilar. Bring that to council with questions.
Referring to the previous chart with our decision ability and what the developer would do, the referendum, if we waited until 2024, it would be less of a cost because it's a regular election, but it wouldn't pertain really because they would already withdraw the Meadows Project because it's two years later?
So, and City Attorney Garagosian can elaborate on this, but calling for the election in November 2024 would not prevent the process from continuing if the applicant decides to submit an application.
Yeah, I think on that comment, we go back to the timeline. I think the importance is if we get to 2024, and first of all, let's say that the Meadows Project is not pulled, which they can do at any time, sitting here right now, what is the likelihood that the SB 330 application, the whole process, will be done before November 2024? Do we know? Because of the streamlining laws.
It would probably, we would already be about in the same procedure currently if we were processing the Meadows for design review and the subdivision, excuse me, we would almost be in that same phase. So we would, SB 330, the application for that would be also in the design review and subdivision phase.
I'm not sure that.
So I guess to add to that, I think it all really depends on how quickly the developer submits their complete application. If they do it in the next 30 days, then this process moves much quicker. Because they submit in 30 days, we have 30 days to determine its completion. Assuming that the application is actually complete, that's it. Then the sequel process begins. We have to determine the level of sequel analysis, and assuming we don't have to do the full EIR, that could be anything from 30 days to, I don't know however many days, depending on what we have to do. And then the hearings begin. So I imagine we could have hearings as soon as end of this year, beginning of next year. Quite possible.
Now, going to the other extreme where we're looking at April 11th, the soonest time. If, I think this is the part that's debated between you and New Urban West's attorney. Let's say the referendum's defeated, and now we have a development agreement, and now we also have an SB 330 project. What, I mean, can they, can we for sure say that we want the Meadows Project at that point in time if the referendum is defeated, or is there some kind of legal analysis or potentially a lawsuit?
So the developer has represented to me orally that they are still interested in pursuing the Meadows Project, but because they have certain financing limitations, they can't have this project go in 2024, is what they're saying. Whether that's true or not really makes little difference to the city because what really matters is whether they have the ability to pull out of the, to pull their Meadows Project and to abandon it. Now, I say a lot to say, if the election is scheduled before 2024, there's no issue, really. The issue is if it's, sorry, before June 2023. If the election is scheduled after June 2023, that's where we have this disagreement. And I'm of the opinion that unless the SB 330 project is fully entitled, if the voters decide to reject the referendum, the ordinance will take effect, and the development agreement and the specific plan will control for that parcel, regardless of whatever SB 330 says.
It's important to know. Thank you. Any more questions?
So if they push 330 through, let's say that the election is in July, and they go, they go pedal to the metal on it, could they make it, make the vote in July meaningless, just like they could in November of 2024?
Well, that's what we disagree on. I definitely agree that if the election were held in November 2024, and if they could get it fully entitled by November 2024, before November 2024, the election, then I think the city is going to be out of luck, and this SB 330 application will proceed. But again, that's really the point of this disagreement between the developer and I. One other point I want to make is, I want residents and the council to understand that these laws all kind of operate, they're related, but they're separate. So for example, if they decided to abandon their density bonus project, the housing accountability and SB 330 would still apply. If SB 330 doesn't apply, Housing Accountability Act and Density Bonus still apply. So we're not dealing with one law here. We're dealing with four. Permit Streamlining Act, SB 330, the Density Bonus Law, and the Housing Accountability Act, which all independently. and the Housing Accountability Act, which all independently apply to this project. So, you know, all these, if, if people are, are trying to poke holes in individual, in the application of individual statutes, I, I just want them to understand that if one doesn't apply, the other one will apply, the other one will apply. It's like, you have to kind of look at it in its totality holistically. Just because we don't, if we, if we say it's not an SB 330 project, but it's still a density bonus project, it's still subject to Housing Accountability Act and, and those limitations. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Worth noting.
Other questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So who can withdraw the referendum?
Councilmember Parkhurst. The proponent who submitted the, the request for the summary, the impartial analysis by the city attorney was Barbara Valturo. So she is the primary proponent, and she's the proponent that can submit for a withdrawal.
She is the only person that can withdraw that?
She is the only person, my point of contact, she is the one that submitted the request.
Other questions?
Can I, can I, just a question for the city clerk. Do, do we know who published the notice? For the intention to circulate?
Do you mean which citizen or which newspaper?
Which, which resident in the, in the city?
The impartial analysis that was completed by the city attorney was forwarded to Barbara Valturo. And it was post-published in the newspaper. I assume she published it since I provided it to her.
Madam City Clerk, is she the one that signed, because the petitions are signed, is she the one that signed it?
The request for the impartial analysis was submitted in person, and it was, it was delivered to me personally and was not signed, but it was stamped received by the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
So, so that, that qualifies essentially as a signature? If there is no signature, is that how, like, I, I don't know, maybe the city attorney can answer that. If, if a document isn't signed, but someone says, hands you a, an application says, "This is for whatever," how, how does that, what's the law around that?
So I'm, I looked up the Elections Code section that defines proponent. And I'll have to confirm that this is actually the correct section for referenda, for local referenda. But it says a proponent, a proponent of an initiative or referendum measure, and then it talks about what it is for a state referendum, for a referenda. And then it says, "Or for other initiative and referendum measures, the person or persons who publish a notice or intention to circulate the petitions, or where there is no publication requirement, the one who files the petition with the elections official," is what it says. So I, I will confirm this point with the city clerk, and we, we'll, we'll determine who the proper person is.
I'm scratching my head here, like, when you, this is a document that's not signed, but yet it got approved by the county. I, I don't understand that. I don't know that there's an answer, but generally you have to sign a document in order for that thing to be approved by a legislative body or, or a governmental agency. I, I'm just trying to understand how something was submitted and not signed, and then approved by the county. I mean, that's, we can't answer that here today, but it's, it's troubling. Any more questions?
I, I think we, we, city clerk was asked the question, "Who is the person who brought it to the city?" And so, Mrs. Valturo is the person who is taking responsibility on this.
I understand that, but how was this, how was this referendum even valid? Because it doesn't even have, didn't even have a signature on it. It was just presented per, by a person. Could have been a non-resident, could have been anybody, right? I, I don't know. I'm just trying to understand that. How is this thing even valid? Okay, any more questions?
But it, it, the county has ruled that it's valid, right?
Sounds like it, yeah, yeah.
So, so did, did the county, did we get somebody from the county that said, "This is valid", and that they made the, the ruling on it? I mean, it, can we, can we question the, the validity of the referendum?
Councilmember Parkhurst, the, the county's role in this is to, to certify my, the city clerk's findings. And so they aren't the overall agency. It's the city clerk for the, for the local agency, which is, which, I am the local clerk. When the petition was filed with me, it was filed in the city clerk's office, and I received it. And I forwarded that to the city attorney for a review, for a preparation of the impartial summary, which was done within the prescribed time. And that was forwarded to Mrs. Valturo. The notice was subsequently placed in the newspaper as required by law. And so then shortly thereafter, the circular, the petition was circulated. But my, my dealings were with Mrs. Valturo.
And follow-up question. So, what's your expertise in, in working on referendum?
If I'm understanding you, are you asking me about my training?
Yes.
My training. So I've had extensive training. I've worked for the city for close to 15 years in, in the city clerk's office, managing or assisting with a number of elections and managing a few on my own in the last five years. This is the first referendum, but several initiatives that we've, that, that I've overseen in the last five years.
Have you been ever asked to call on your expertise outside of the city for your expertise around initiatives and referenda?
And as part of my training and as part of my expertise as a city clerk, I have been recognized by the City Clerks Association of California and asked to be a guest speaker at an upcoming conference that discusses specifically referendums.
At, at the state level, is that right?
That is correct.
So, so someone has seen the experience that you have had, has dealt with you through your certification processes and said that you are knowledgeable, and, and you, you've got training on it, and now you're being asked to speak on this in a public forum at the state level. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
Exhausted. Okay. Let's open this up to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, there were three emails that were received on this topic. The first was from Susan Neuhausen, the second from Dan Golden, and the third for Glenn Hickman. All three emails were forwarded to the city council. There are also a number of speaker cards received this evening. We have nine at the moment. The first speaker is Michael Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham?
Good evening, members of the city council. Happy New Year to you. I'm Michael Cunningham, Retreat Center Director at Matter de la Rosa. Our retreat center has provided spiritual growth, guidance, and comfort to generations of local and regional area residents. We've been able to do this because the future of our mission has not been affected by unexpected local rezoning of our center. Our future has been in question because of the actions of sponsors of Measure HR, especially with their filing of a ballot initiative early last year. As you're all well aware, the passage of that initiative would have made it nearly impossible for us to ever expand our ministry facilities here to meet future needs. When the people of Sierra Madre voted so forcefully to reject this unfair initiative by a considerable margin, my board of directors, the staff, and the community at Matter de la Rosa said prayers of Thanksgiving because we thought we could finally begin to plan again for our future. Who would have thought that the initiative sponsors would have ignored the defeat of their position at the ballot box and filed a referendum? It just seems impossible that anyone could be so unwilling to concede and accept the will of the voters. Yet here we are, discussing when to put their referendum on the ballot because the same small minority that signed their initiative also signed their referendum petition. I hope and pray that they will come to withdraw their referendum so Matter de la Rosa and the people of Sierra Madre can put all this painful and harmful uncertainty behind us and move forward with our traditions and programs at the retreat center. It's also very unfortunate that an alternate plan submitted by Newey at this point to the council may be the only solution to this problem. The solution, however, reduces many of the benefits to the city negotiated in good faith by the council and the Planning Commission before them. These benefits would have been considerable financial and social utility to the city and local residents, but will be removed as a result. The developer is having to utilize state development legislation to move the previously approved project forward. It's a sad start to 2023, and one which lays waste to many years of careful consideration, negotiation, effort, and concessions from the city. We hope that the proponents of this referendum will reconsider their actions, which are detrimental to many in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies if I mispronounced his name. Alice Wuchello, followed by Pat Alcorn.
Good evening, city council. I just want to say at this time, take a deep breath. I am one of those people who was out there gathering signatures for the referendum. And I ran into a lot of people in Sierra Madre also that were for and against it. But I was around people who were also for it. The result being, we're not a small minority. We are not a small minority. We needed 866 signatures. We got 1,222. We just heard about that. Again, Measure H, that was one, I don't have, I know there was 1,000 for no, 1,000 for yes, and I don't know the hundreds number. Again, not a small minority. I will look in the mirror every day of my life and say, we try, the high, that high, fire hazard area, building those homes up there, the wilderness area, the root system being destroyed. Anyways, I will be very, very proud, and I love those citizens, both the ones for and against it. But we're not a small minority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Pat Alcorn, followed by Deb Sheridan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Pat Alcorn, and I still live on Grand View.
Are you sure?
The opponents of the Meadows project contended that they wanted the voice of the people to be heard. The people were heard twice. Measure HR was put up for a vote with the premise that the public would have a say in managing the zoning laws. The measure was basically designed to quash the 42 home development approved by the city in September. The public did have their say as they loudly voted against the measure in the desire to override the experience and wisdom of the elected city council and the expertise of the planning commission. The second vote was that the citizens of Sierra Madre re-elected two of the council members who approved the monastery project, elected another candidate who campaigned, who campaigned on the approval of the project, and rejected the candidate who pushed an Initiative HR. In doing so, the voter, voters validated the city's trust in our city council. It is now a project that has been deemed accessible by a majority of the voters of Sierra Madre. No other vote is needed. This is no longer a question about the voice of the people being heard. What can be gained by either forcing the denial of the project or the idea of another election? Nothing. The only positive force that can happen is if Barbara Valturo withdraws the referendum, noting that the people have spoken and the citizens had their say on November 8th. Thank you.
Ms. Alcorn?
Mr. Mayor, Deb Sheridan, followed by Susan Neuhausen.
Good evening again, council members. Deb Sheridan. I find it, and I'm sorry, you guys are really between a rock and a hard place. But I do find it incredible that you are once again caving into the bullying by the developer, New Urban West, whose representative has stated over and over their investors want this project done. I'll repeat, their investors want this project. You have forgotten who you were elected to serve, the residents. Mayor Garcia, apparently you have mentioned to several people that the general plan was written by amateurs. Might I remind you that the updated general plan of 2015 was diligently worked on by approximately 100 of our residents, guided by paid city staff and city lawyer, approved by that year's city council? Quite a few of those who worked on the general plan later became city council members and/or commissioners. As I recall, we saved the city over $25,000 by doing much of the work ourselves. When a so-called expert was hired, the finished project product had glaring errors, like Orangewood Street on our southern border, and several stores that were no longer in existence in Kerstin Court. I will remind you again that the general plan is the constitution of the city and should be adhered to. And even though we have new state laws, which are difficult. But you have ignored your residents for the last three years, and you are the ones that are costing the city so much money. Those of us who have voted and who have filed these petitions feel like we have not been listened to. So why would you call for a special election for a certified referendum when you can just wait for a regularly scheduled election that will cost you a lot less money? You could have prevented this by waiting for Measure HR vote instead of holding two special elections to approve the Meadows project to get it done. That's what gave New Urban West the opportunity to submit SB 330 application. Shame on you, city council.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Father Michael Higgins, followed by Howard Hayes.
Father Higgins is declining.
Okay. And then Howard Hayes, followed by Allison Snow.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Ms. Snow?
And followed by Robert Jardy.
Hello again. Sorry. Yes, as a taxpayer, I do not want to pay for a special election, so the election should be held at the next general election in November 2024, unless the applicant wants to pay for it.
Thank you, Ms. Snow.
Robert Jardy, followed by Gary Hood.
As Howard knows, once is not enough for me. The city fought hard to negotiate $7 million in concessions from New Urban West. I think you have an obligation to protect the value of those concessions and to hold New Urban West to the specific plan and the development agreement. It is neither your nor the developer's fault that a small group of citizens are holding the city hostage because they're upset they lost an election where there was an overwhelming support for the city council, the passionists, and the Meadows project. I suggest that you spend the $325,000 to hold a special election. It's a small price to pay to preserve $7 million in value, and is the cost of plain politics with a group of stubborn and selfish people. The addition of the $5 million park will more than pay for the election in increased home value. The trust for public land shows that there are 400 homes within a 10-minute walk of the new park. A meta-study done by the National Recreation and Park Association shows that having a high-quality passive park near your home will increase its value by 8% to 10%. If we conservatively assume only a 5% increase in value, that is $20 million in increased value to local residents. Don't give that up over $325,000. I would ask that you hold a special election as soon as possible and let the citizens vote again on the Meadows project. The choice is either 42 homes and all the concessions, or 50 homes. If you wait two years, you're getting the 50 homes. Who in their right mind would want more homes and no park? How is that protecting and preserving Sierra Madre's interests? You might consider delaying the election and include another ballot initiative on it to form a special district to tax local residents who will benefit most from the project and let them pay for the election. Or tax all the households in Sierra Madre, $10 a year for 10 years to cover the cost of the election. Because the cost of the election has increased tenfold, has increased tenfold due to changes made during COVID, maybe you can apply COVID funds to pay for the election. The will of the voters has already been expressed in support of the project. The referendum has no end game. If they win, we get 50 homes and we lose a park. That will not accomplish their goal of protecting the meadow or stopping housing. I can only guess that these people are not thinking clearly. I can't imagine what they have against parks, open space, offsetting water use, and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jardy.
And the next speaker is Gary Hood.
Good evening, Gary Hood, North Baldwin. What a night. And it's very interesting that we're trying to put the blame on the 1,300 signatures, when this really goes back prior to when we hired Gabe. And he came in here and the city council said, hey, we need some money, you got to come and help us out here. They picked the best city manager they could. But the problem started in council members before Gabe got here, and that's why the city was in such a financial mess. And I really take offense to somebody saying, well, I walked the whole community and everybody was against the referendum, and they wanted the 42 homes. This started when the city council started out by dropping the seven members of the planning commission to five. Real interesting what that was all about. And then to give special consideration and bypass our general plan. And then insult that the general plan was made up by, I think, idiots or something like that. A lot of time was spent. And I'm really insulted that they come up and they say, well, we're against the church, we're non-Christians. I'm insulted by that. The council, from way back, has started this process and this problem, and you're trying to blame it on the people that signed the referendum. Why did people sign the referendum? The majority of the taxpayers in town are property owners. And you just bypass the property owners and go on along with big business. Maybe, as some people say, oh, we don't want the city to be sued. Well, they were protected under the MOU because they didn't have to worry about any suits other than from the church and the New Urban West. So what's the community supposed to feel, that we've been bypassed all this time, and now you try to blame the problem on us, when the problem goes way back to past council members? And it's an insult, and I'm here, I'm not doing any good, I'm just making myself feel better, that I'm telling you people, this problem is not the community's problem, it's the council's problem. And I was told, you hire a city manager as a CEO and the city council goes along with him. Now, that was told to me by a city council member who is no longer on the council. But Gabe put us in this position, and now you guys are trying to blame whoever and trying to get out from under this. This problem is started by past council members, and I think it's time that you know Senate Bill's nine, Senate Bill's 10, Senate Bill's 330. Years ago, when the council just bypassed it, didn't do anything about it, now we're in this problem and blaming it on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hood.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards received.
Mr. Arietta.
Just a few more comments. Wanted to reiterate the point that we didn't have a reason to referend the resolution. We have such a beginning that we're not opposed to residential land use, per se. There were some significant problems with the 42-home development, which we have labored beyond reason, so we're not going to go through all of them again, except the high-fire zone came up again tonight. Remains an issue. Traffic, extremely flawed EIR. I don't know why people think that that's okay. It was flawed. It wasn't looked at. Carter was not considered in it. We referended the specific plan because we object to that project. The 50-house development does not make the 42-house, oh, suddenly it's great, it's God's gift to developers, or developers' gift to the citizen. Our initiative and referendum were done roughly around the same time. Someone made the inerrant comment that you did the referendum because the initiative lost. Not true. Initiative was already underway. Referendum was parallel to that. Now, there is a reason for that. For a number of very important reasons, citizens have lost trust in council. Started two years ago with former Councilor Arizmendi cutting out citizen comments that were negative about the project and not allowing comments about anything to be read in city council meetings. Huge, huge blow to public trust in city council at that point. There are a number of other instances that came up. All that to say, the citizens felt like they had to do the initiative. The citizens felt they had to do the referendum to get the city council to pay attention to what was important. And this is not, I remind you, not a small group of upset citizens. This is a sizable group. 1,200 citizens at least have signed off on two different occasions who were educated about both the referendum and the initiative. Now, in terms of the funding for this, New Urban West has a lot of money. They stand to earn millions if they should pay for the special election, hold their feet to the fire. Otherwise, hold this election on November 20/24, when other referendums are held, and as would typically be the case. New Urban West should not be allowed to just proceed, roughshod. They should pay for the special election, not the city. And if they don't want to pay, then we shouldn't schedule a special election. A minimum, special election should not be held before April 11th, which is the earliest date. There is still so much to be done, so many concerns discussed, and there might be opportunity to have some discussion around that. But definitely don't schedule it before that time, or else that is shot, that opportunity. The FPPC says that a developer can pay for the cost of a special election, by the way. So please listen to your residents and your citizens. That's what you're elected to do. Don't do any favors for an Alatown developer who is so motivation is greed, and they don't care about destroying the character of this city.
Thank you, Mr. Arietta. That's it?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a discussion on our hands. What to do about the election.
So again, we have three choices.
Yeah, go ahead.
We can not have an election at all, and we can repeal 1461. Second option is we have an election in 2023, either in April or June. Third option is election in 2024. And the flow chart kind of showed what would happen. Even if the referendum goes through and the 1461 is repealed or is taken away off the table, Meadows Project goes mute, that means that SB 330 goes through. Or proceeds. Proceeds, thank you. If we wait till 2024, it proceeds.
Yes. Mayor Broton.
I am so of two minds here. I do not want to pay money for this election at all, like not one dime. So part of me, honestly, and maybe it's the petty part of me, I'll just be honest, wonders if we should take door number one and just repeal the ordinance and be done.
Not a single person has asked us to repeal the ordinance tonight. That's telling.
I mean, honestly, like, I understand the economics, obviously, of paying 325 or maybe closer to 400 for the election, and that obviously being less than the, just even the monetary benefits. Do the city under the Meadows Development Agreement? So, look, I can do the math. But it just, it just is so galling that we would have to spend money out of our reserves, probably, for this election, because, you know, the money from the Development Agreement, it's not like a dollar-for-dollar thing. That's going to be over time. And so, you know, in terms of budgeting, it will come out of our reserves. I mean, that's more than the money that you had proposed, you know, helping out the playhouse.
More than their entire request.
Right. So, I don't know. I mean, like, look, I'm not looking to do a fire sale here. Like, I also recognize that the benefits of one project versus the other, like I said earlier, I mean, they're not debatable. There's no question in my mind that of the two projects, which is better and which is better for the city and which addresses all of the concerns that we did hear multiple times and listened to and responded to. So that's, to me, not even a discussion. So that's my two minds. One is, I am so loathe to spend a dollar on this, but on the other hand, clearly recognize which project should be, would be better for the city. So, I don't know. I'm just very stymied. And I look forward to others unstymieing me.
Councilmember Gos.
Go ahead. Well, I feel the same way. I mean, to me, it's just a no-brainer. I mean, I heard people up here who, people I know are really smart people and good citizens in our city. They seem to be under the impression that, and I just heard them state it, that if we let this go to 2024 to save some money, that somehow everything's going to be fine. Oh, you're going to get the 330 development. I mean, what? Are you serious? All I can say is, somebody, we're talking past each other here. There's a certain set of facts that I think some people are just not aware of. You're right, it is tempting. We forego all this if we just said, okay, heck, let's repeal the Meadows Project, we get the development that we're talking about, the 330, right?
Well, I mean, it proceeds.
It proceeds, which means, and it proceeds with five meetings and with very little control. And I noticed that you're right, no one came down and asked us to repeal it. So, I mean, if they're really serious about getting rid of the Meadows Project, wouldn't that have been their first move?
Well, it seems to me that repealing it has the same outcome as a successful referendum, right? I mean, it's the same outcome.
Same outcome.
The Meadows Project is overturned. And so, it suggests to me that either there's, you know, misunderstanding, as Councilmember Gos, I almost called you Mayor Gos, said, or it's just about delay. And thinking that something will happen between now and the general election that somehow will magically change the state laws and make our process with respect to SB 330 different. And I just think that's not realistic.
And if anything, if I can interrupt, if anything, the state laws are going to get tougher.
They have already, as of...
Every year they get tougher.
Nine days ago, right?
Yes.
I mean, you know, there will be a development on this process of land, full stop. I mean, there will be. And whether, you know, it's the decision of a city manager, two, three, five ago, the general plan, the planning commission, the church, that's not what's before us. Before us is, when is their election? That is the only decision we have. Well, we've got three decisions, and Councilmember Lowe laid them out very well. It is, it is when we have an election or we rescind the ordinance. That's really what it comes down to. You know, and I guess, you know, if we wait till November, we get 50 homes. We've heard some of the folks tonight say, you know, have Newey pay for the election if they want to have it early. Newey has no incentive to pay for the election. Zero. They can just let this go out, and they can, they can take the Meadows, walk away, go forward with the 330 and say, thank you very much. And they, you want a profit motive, you want them to be greedy, they could do that. If they really want to be greedy, that's what they could do. That's what they would do right away. For me, I'm a rip-off-the-band-aid type of thing. I say, if people have said, we've got all these signatures, we want to do it, let's go forward, let's have the election on April 11th, let's get this done, we're delaying other things. We could be working on other things. We could be working on my favorite project of electrification. We could be working on EVs. We could be working on, you know, a whole host of other things, a whole host of events in the city. But right now, this is what we've been stuck with. And we are really between a rock and a hard place. And, you know, whether or not this decision was before us, before or after the election, I would have voted the same. And you see three people up here that supported the Meadows Project that are here. That says something. So I'm like, let's move forward. And really, actually, the last thing, last thing I'm going to say is, you know, this is really in the hands of a small group of people, if not one person. It is, if we really want to boil it down to, if this referendum goes forward, I believe, and people can disagree with me, I believe we will get 50 homes. The only way that we get 42 homes, the only way we are assured 42 homes is if the referendum is pulled. If we go forward, we are gambling. It is, you know, Councilmember Gos said it's a roulette wheel, and the roulette wheel is stacked against us. I don't want to, and Mr. Jardy said $7 million. Whether it's $7 million or $2 million or $1.3 million, whatever it is, we stand to lose that. It really worries me. And that's where, when I said before, it's a hard decision, this is what aches, this is what's really painful on it, is that, you know, it is a bunch of bad decisions. And so I'm like, let's make the decision by Friday, let's do this, let's move on, and we can do other things in the city. I think it's right. This has torn our city apart, and I hate it. I absolutely hate it. But I want to move forward. I don't want this to go on to 2024. I don't want to have this conversation anymore. I'm sorry. I want to focus on other things. That's not why I got elected. All right, I'm sorry. A little too impassioned.
I feel better, too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sitting here, not only is not one of the proponents said, take door number one and repeal ordinance number 1461 today, but not one has explained to us why they've only referended the ordinance and not the resolution. If I knew the answer to that, maybe we can make a better decision, but I don't know why. We are told we're blaming people. No, it's a fact, we're in this situation because only the ordinance was referended and not the resolution. That's the only reason we're sitting here, having this discussion today. Yeah, I would just, yes, I would plead to, please pull it. We, all the concessions that happened during the whole process, and I'm thinking about people talking about the New Urban West flyers and all that, we all had quotes. My quote actually had a big empty spot with ellipses because I said, the process worked. People stood up, came to the city and said, we don't like this project, make it better. And what happened? It got better. That's what happened. The process worked because people did dissent, and people spoke up and said, we want, we don't want straight streets, we want curvy streets, we want, we want access to Bailey Canyon, we want more parking, we don't want a huge parking lot. But it all got refined through the public process. And now that's all been taken away. So, as I hate to spend $325,000, I hate to spend $400,000 even more. And if we wait until January, we're being told to wait until the presidential election, but we know what will happen. We will have 50 homes, no park, no money for public safety, no money for water, no say in how the homes look, how different they are on any given street. I don't think the passionists want that. They want something that's compatible, as compatible with the neighborhood. And you're going to lose your setbacks. These setbacks were argued for on the West Side. Those will be gone. I think 330 is going to say five feet, right? You're going to, you're going to have a house right up against your house if you live on the West Side. Is that what you want? I don't think so. That's our decision here today. We can't fight the state. You can fight the state, we can fight the state as individuals, but this is the current law, and this is what we're stuck with. And to the comment earlier, it's just gotten worse. We don't want to play roulette with our city.
When I was running, of course, I always said I'd come to consensus, and I think I valued that. And I think the process was effective, and it means it's what I remember going to meetings with every single person here that spoke tonight. We all spoke 1,000 times, you know, so many words, we prepared what we thought, we did great research, and we tried to come up with something that worked for as many people as possible, and when voices were heard, actions actually took place. It wasn't just like, let me hear what you have to say, and I'm not going to listen, and we're going to plan this thing. There were so many differences that were changed. There was every single meeting, and the planning commission did so much. the Planning Commission did so much work and effort, and hours and hours of going through each thing that people said. When it came to council, every comment, even emailed, even social media comments that people had, were taken into account and tried to accommodate those changes. That's when our voices were heard. That's when the whole city's voices were heard. So, when the plan went through with as many concessions as everyone in the public could try to come up with, you're never going to satisfy every single person. I understand that. But now, if this doesn't go through, unfortunately, since the referendum put us in that position of not removing the new zoning, therefore, we either have this decision or this decision. And I think, in my opinion, that three thirty isn't going to make any of us happy. It doesn't look like it has any concessions that we would want. And if we wait till the twenty-fourth, we gamble, like you said, Russia roulette, we gamble with that being a possibility. If we remove and we automatically repeal fourteen sixty-one right now, the likelihood is we get the gamble again, but most likely, we will get the SB three thirty-type plan.
We will. No, because the Meadows is dead at that point.
It's gone. And so, therefore, we have to do what's right for the public and have their election. And that would have to be April or June.
I'm not sure what's being asked of us by a lot of the public comment. Are they asking us? They want the fifty homes with, with all the concessions gone?
No.
I'm trying to figure this out.
I mean, that's what would happen if there was
If we wait till twenty twenty-four.
Or if the referendum succeeded. I would assume that the proponents pushing for the referendum want it to succeed. I mean, wouldn't that be the point of putting something on the ballot is because you want it to be passed? So, I don't know. I mean, as impassioned and, as emotions are running high tonight, I think, I don't, I mean, I don't know procedurally how this would work, but, because we have some pretty tight timing, given the deadline of Friday for, you know, for mounting an election in April, I guess I would just make a last appeal. I mean, hopefully, this meeting tonight, shared facts, outlined, outlined sort of the position that we're in, and people understand, again, the lack of decision we really have here. The only thing that's going to save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars is if, by Friday, frankly, this referendum gets withdrawn. So, I would just make another plea for Mrs. Viltoro to really consider what the goal of the referendum is at this point. If the goal of the referendum is to kill the Meadows Project carte blanche, sure, okay, a successful referendum would do that. But if the goal of the referendum is to prevent development at the Meadows Project, that will not be achieved. If the goal of the referendum is to create a development at the Meadows Project that is acceptable to everyone in town, that also will not be achieved. So, I'm just not clear, I think, to the mayor's point, at this point, what the desired outcome is, other than either resulting in the fifty-home development that, that the applicant has applied for, or needlessly costing the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't want to hear from you about your sidewalks. I don't want to hear from you about your water leaks. I mean, that's money that would be going to those types of things every day, every week in our city, and we will not have that money. So, I just will put it out there. Please ask yourself, what is the desired outcome at this point? And are you really willing to forego hundreds of thousands of dollars of city money to result in two bad choices?
And I'll remind people, Measure HR, we, as a body, had it, we could have put it, we could have put Measure HR on two thousand twenty-four. We had that ability. Did we do that? No, we brought it to the people as soon as possible. We could have done that. It could have been in two thousand twenty-four. But we didn't. Yes.
Can I make a suggestion on going forward?
Yes.
So, there's been a lot of information that's gone out. I think Councilmember Krebs has said that, you know, that it is, that emotions run high. I can say that that happened with myself. You know, maybe we just need, like, a little bit of time for everybody to reflect on this, and for some conversations to go on in the community. But not to go too long. Not to go too long.
We can't.
Not too long.
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, we, as Councilmember Lowe said, we've got April or June. And I'm the band-aid guy. I want to rip it off on, on April eleventh. So, I'd like to propose a special meeting for Thursday, where we can make the decision, we can vote then on when to have the election. We vote for either April eleventh or sometime in June. And we give people a chance to, you know, give them seventy-two hours, whatever it is that we've got between now and then, to forty-eight hours, I guess, is really what it is, to really think about this and make that decision. And then, we've got until Friday, if we want to go for April, and then, or if we want to go further, we can defer it on Thursday night. But I think, I personally, I, there's, I, that's my proposed direction.
So, Madam State Clerk, per the election code, can we do that, or do we have to make a decision tonight?
The city council will, does not have to make a decision tonight. The only decision that city council has to make tonight is to certify the results of the petition.
Okay.
And the city council could hold a, a special meeting, or we, or put this off to the next meeting if you don't, if you've already decided you don't want to put it on April eleventh. You could bring it back to a future meeting, or you could also direct the city attorney to prepare a report that shows, that provides an analysis of the impacts of
I don't think we need more reports. I think the facts are out there, and we've been discussing this for a couple of years now, personally.
And is there really anything on, I mean, it's, the county certified the signatures. They were, as, as the proponents said, there were more than enough signatures. So, you know, I don't know if there's any discussion or debate about that. I mean, someone looked and looked with a critical eye, both you and the county, said, this is the right number of signatures. So, I think we have to, I, I
Oh, definitely.
I can't see, I mean, I'm happy to vote on that tonight.
Oh, absolutely.
That's done.
How do we feel about making the decision in a couple of days for when we put this thing on the ballot? Because obviously, this, we're going to certify this thing.
We could do it now, or we could do it Thursday night.
Do it Thursday night.
If we do it Thursday night, why are we doing it Thursday night? We're giving the folks involved in this an opportunity to get together collectively, put their heads together, and see if they can want to reconsider or not. I mean, really, I think that's what this would be. The only benefit is to give the folks who are pushing for the referendum a chance to rethink this, you know, talk to each other about it, and, and hopefully withdraw their petition, withdraw their referendum before we have to make a decision. But yeah, at the very latest Thursday night, because at this point in time, I would be in favor of the April date, and that's what we'd have to, we'd have to meet Thursday night. If we're going to end up doing the April date.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to artificially limit our options
No.
by missing a deadline.
No.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I agree.
I absolutely want to give the proponents time to rethink this.
We don't need to vote on the special meeting, do we?
No.
No, we just
I think so. We can just say, yeah.
Make a motion to certify, probably.
We have to certify the
All right. So, I'll make a motion to certify the petition signatures for the referendum to repeal city ordinance number fourteen sixty-one, to approve a zoning map amendment, and approve a specific plan, and approving a development agreement for the Meadows at Bailey Canyon Project located at seven hundred North Sunnyside Avenue in the city of Sierra Madre, California. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, folks, that takes us to the end of the agenda. Any, any ideas for future agendas or future business?
I'd like to propose going through, analyzing our safety plans for our mobility and, what do we call it? The mobility and
Transportation.
Transportation plan in City of Sierra Madre.
Oh, and
As a part of that, I'd like to include cycling in that. I know that we've heard that before. I, I don't know if it's part of, of one of the, I know we've had a previous request on it, but I think it may
Did you say recycling?
Cycling.
Oh, cycling, sorry.
Bicycling.
I was like, I wasn't seeing the connection with recycling, but cycling makes sense.
It's still the environmental angle. No, but seriously, I'd like to think about that as well.
Bikes made out of recycled materials.
I'd also like to honor the request of Mrs. Stevens to agendize the, her request to waive the appeal fee.
And on the same evening, we're still doing business here. Thank you.
I mean, if feasible, it would make sense to have it be on the same night, so they don't have to come back twice, if that makes, if that works for staff. I mean, I don't know if it's necessary or not, but, necessary for it to be on the same night.
On the, on the fourteenth?
Yeah, she, her request was to agendize that, so we could consider it, but, and also that it be on the same night as the appeal was scheduled.
I think that provides us enough time.
Okay.
Is that it?
Mayor, I just want to, I want to clarify with the, the transportation and circulation update, we're also going to look at four streets, including Fairview, Sunnyside, Sunnyside, Mariposa, Alverno, Grand View, and Grand View and Cannon. Were those the streets that were
Was
Not Alverno and Grand View.
Sorry. Grand View and Cannon?
Grand View and Cannon was one. Sunnyside and Fairview was another.
Sunnyside and Mariposa.
Sunnyside and Mariposa.
We probably should look at Grand View, because that's where we do get a lot of complaints
Grand View, we get a lot of complaints.
Mayor, you mentioned, when you were campaigning on Grand View near Alverno, which was that intersection?
What is that street?
Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson. Yeah. But the, no, 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 no. The real problem was on Montecito. Montecito, because people were blocking the exit of Montecito out onto Michelinda, literally blocking it, as they're in line to go to Alverno.
Is this bleeding into the Berkeley thing that we had an application for, and even know if that's still kind of going forward?
Thank you for remembering.
So, Montecito and Michelinda.
I want to make sure we're not wasting city staff resources, that we potentially could have some of this done by students of Berkeley.
Yeah, that, that project was awarded
Oh, great.
right before the Christmas break, and I think they're going to get started in March, something like that.
Well, issues like, I know
Yeah.
I know issues such as a better circulation for walking, biking, driving, all that, pedestrians. Is safety a component of this?
It's, it's the main component, is the safety.
Great. Great. Okay. All right, is that it? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody, for staying.